For the meeting. Excellent. Okay, this is a special meeting of the planning board July 11th, 2023. We will have a, if there's anyone in the public who wants to participate and speak to any issue other than the continuation of the discussion of L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two one. You are welcome to put your hand up is. Who Devon, are you managing all that part two?
Yes, I'm taking care of all of that for tonight.
Okay, so could you? But first, is there anyone, can you see if anyone has put their hand up?
Yeah, as of right now, I do not see any hands. But again, as a reminder, if there are any public participants, please raise your hand at this time for the general public comment. For any items not pertaining to the to the item for discussion tonight. I do have one Lynn for for one.
Wait, before you go, then you just have to quickly go through the rules, please.
Absolutely. Alrighty, so since we do have public participation and public comment tonight, we do have to go through the rules and procedures here for public comment. So the city has engaged with the community members to create co-create a vision for productive, meaningful and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff and board and commission members, as well as the democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences and political perspectives. The following are examples of rules decorum found in the Boulder revised code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All test remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use of other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets and other speech and behaviors that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct this meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted permitted online. For the public comments section, it's pretty simple. There's a few bars at the bottom of your screen there. So just click this raise hand button and that will let everyone know that you're interested in commenting. Also, if you are on a phone, you can do star nine. If you're on a Mac, you can click action Y, option Y, or if you're on a PC, you can click alt Y and those will raise your hand for you. And with that, that is the rules of decorum.
Didn't realize I had muted myself, so let's go ahead and take what comment, please Devon.
Great Lynn, you have three minutes. I'll put the timer on my screen here for you.
Only two minutes. I see three.
You have three minutes Lynn, please go ahead.
Thank you, I was told two and then I see three, so I'm just trying to follow instructions. Boy, oh boy. Okay, um, what what I want to talk tonight is about the survival of the city of Boulder. And how the city of Boulder needs to no longer be wagged the tail by CU. This, this has got to stop. We already have CU South, that has ruined this town. You watch in five years, you won't know this place. There'll be congestion, parking, transit, all kinds of disasters. You know, I drove past on my bike because I don't like to go east, but I had to go to to the J C C. And so I'm driving on the seventy mile an hour, you know, Arapaho. And then I run into Zokolo, I think it's Waterview, right Sarah? It's Waterview out there across from the J C C. I thought it was on the other side of the street, but now I get it, it's four hundred some units. It's a whole city within a city. You know, I went to testify the other day for Kanamoto, which is a conservation easement vacation request for a developer on the way to Longmont at Airport Road. And you know what? There was one person that testified there. She had a sister who's a first responder, you know, an emergency room person and can't afford to live in Longmont, so she lives in in Bertha. And what I said in my testimony was, I said, you know what? And ironically, this woman, you know, her sister is, you know, in this position. And this woman is testifying on behalf of the developer. So she doesn't have a clue herself what impact this would have on her own sister. If that development happens, her sister's gonna have to move further to Kansas towards Kansas. You know, we'll be lucky if there'll be one affordable place left in Des Moines. You know, at the rate that we're developing. Stop already, stop. This is ridiculous, you know, CU does not own this town. I'm not going to use the M word because I can't speak about that, but you know what? What I have to say right now, it involves this thing you're talking about tonight, there's no way you can extricate it. All of these things are interconnected. It's all a big web. And it's got to stop. And you are within the power of at least advising the city council to stop already, please. Thanks.
Thank you Lynn. It looks like we have no other hands up. If anyone wants to put their hand up, now is the time. Alright, so no hands. Alright, so public participation is closed and we are going to take up, continue the hearing that we had last, two weeks ago on L U R two zero two two dash zero zero two one, it's a site and use review for the property at thirteen forty five twenty eighth street. Let me just quickly walk everyone through what our agenda, how we're going to manage the meeting. So that we're all on the same page. Uh, the applicant has requested some time to flare, to provide some responses to questions that we had raised. Actually, when we'd already moved into deliberation, a little unusual, but they requested this time and the city would like to honor that request. Well, they can make some clarifications and then if board members have further questions for the applicant, we can, you can ask those questions. Then the design advisory board chair is going to provide us with about five minutes of discussion of their deliberations and we can follow up with questions to the dab chair and I apologize, I don't actually know the dab chair's names, so my apologies for not naming you at this moment. Once we've concluded with the dab chair summary, we will enter into our planning board deliberations. When we get to the deliberations, the way we're gonna, what I'm gonna try to do is sort of go down the line of everybody to get your comments and thoughts, which we had started two weeks ago. And then see who, see who has some conditions they might want to propose. Do some straw polls on any conditions that are put forth. And then as we, as it shakes out, like what it looks like may pass or not pass. We can then decide if we want to actually take votes on any of the straw polls, any of the conditions. And then we will make a, make a, make a final motion, which may or may not include conditions depending on the previous component of the conversation. I appreciate everybody coming back for this meeting and I appreciate George, who's two in the morning in Sweden. Very nice of him to be awake to join us, thank you very much. Alright, so let us ask the applicant, please applicant and their consultant. I think there's a raft of people here who are here to clarify some things for us. And if I may say one more thing, the materials that were sent to us today, I believe were sent to us at the request of the applicants. It didn't, if I'm not mistaken, staff, is that correct?
That's correct, Chair, they're forwarded to you on behalf of the applicant team.
Okay, thank you very much, I just want to make that clear that this is not the staff sending us additional information to read. Okay, so Charles, wherever you are, can you just tell me how much time we want, we have available for the applicant to clarify some points? Should we be ten minutes, fifty, like what should be the amount of time?
Well, the typical presentation time is fifteen minutes in the hybrid environment. So maybe that's a good place to start.
Okay, but they've already given their presentation, so you know, my goal here is not to, not to create an unexpected standard where the applicant gets to come back and do a second presentation. Is what do we, do we usually, do we have a typical response time to comments or questions that have been raised before we go into?
Not a prescribed amount of time, and that's why I just, you know, thought the analog that we have is typically the fifteen minutes for presentation.
We'll make it fifteen minutes, so if Devon, if you'll just keep track of that, that'd be great. Alright, Danica, take it away, please.
Alright, thank you, we appreciate your time tonight. I, I want to make sure everybody's promoted, I think our whole team is here and if they, if anyone's not, we're just going to raise our hand and hopefully get promoted to panelist. We are just going to quickly run through the materials that we shared with you and we weren't, we did not prepare a formal presentation, but we wanted to provide the information that came up for discussion that was included in our packet. And hopefully answer some of the questions that started to be asked at our last meeting. And then we would love to entertain more questions. We have, as you mentioned, a whole slew of consultants here that are ready and able to answer questions. And with that, I would ask for Amy to share our PDF. She might need sharing opportunity, I'm not sure.
Yeah, thank you, if you could allow me to share my screen.
And we just wanted to thank you for spending an extra evening with us tonight. We recognize this is a very large project, it's a complex project. And we appreciate all of your time to spend a whole nother night on this and we hope that we have a productive discussion and look forward to it. Next slide. So there's some key areas that we just wanted to touch on that were discussed at the last meeting. One was just the, kind of the public facing aspects of this project, next slide. So in terms of community benefit, we did work with Michelle with the Housing and Human Services to do a calculation on the cash and lieu that would be generated by this project. It's twenty million dollars in cash and lieu that would be paid to the city's Affordable Housing Fund at the time of building permit. Approximately eight million dollars of that is associated with the fourth story or the, the height modification. And we, which is second bullet, the public improvements here are approximately seven and a half million dollars. We really tried to design a space that looks like the civic area up near the library and the civic area space. Really creating a huge public benefit that with pickleball courts and tennis courts and a dog park, creek access, habitat restoration. So we feel that this is a significant benefit to the community as well as providing the ongoing maintenance and management of this public space. So that we, the Parks and Rec Department and or Open Space Department do not have to provide maintenance. They would provide snow removal of the multi-use path. But the rest of that ongoing maintenance would be provided by the developer. And we are bringing the site under modern flood protection. As we probably mentioned last time, the building and the site are in the, a lot of them are in the high hazard zone. So a big part of this project was designing the buildings to be out of the floodplain and creating a public safety opportunity for everybody that visits the site or would live on the site. And we're retaining the small businesses. Amy can show the cursor, there's two small cottages that are here on the south side of the creek. One, that one is actually home to Simba, this and the Lake Eldora racing team and the single mountain, single track mountain bike alliance and also a small daycare, they both have been there for many, many years, I think the daycare has been there over twenty five years, so we would allow them to stay and then this other building, which is currently office building for the tennis center would be open to small businesses as an affordable commercial space. We're also retaining the Fish Observatory, which has been there for a very long time and would, we are working with Parks and Rec to bring that up to current standards and make it more accessible, we would also be providing maintenance for that space. And rooftop solar, which was brought up during our concept plan hearing and incorporating as much solar as possible. We are unable to put it on the ground plane anywhere that's in the high hazard floodplain, so we had to maximize our rooftop space. Next slide. So this was, we wanted to really show where the public and private space was, as you can see on the site, a lot of, all of the space out there now is private space. And so we will be turning a lot of that into public open space with access easements. As I mentioned, and so we're significantly improving that, we're tripling the public outdoor space, we're improving the creek access. Have a safer alignment for the Boulder Creek path and creating those amenities that I described that would also be open to the public. The orange areas would be the private open space for the residents that live there and they mostly are private courtyards and recreation areas. Next slide. Reducing the impervious surface, this is a graphic that we included in our site review. You can see the existing impervious area in orange. And so we're reducing that through this redevelopment, introducing more pervious areas, more storm water quality, which is not there today and protection of the Boulder Creek. Also increasing the tree canopy and reducing the heat island effect, so we're increasing the number of trees that will be planted there. And while reducing the impervious surfaces, next slide. We feel that building housing near campus will reduce impacts on the broader community. It will bring students that traditionally live in the hill or other single family neighborhoods out of those neighborhoods into a managed student housing project, thus reducing the vehicle miles traveled, reducing stress on those residential communities and encouraging this modal split that we've seen through data that the city has collected that students, when located near campus, really reduce or reduce their single occupant vehicle travel and use they walk and bike and do other things and we have a lot of data that was provided from the city over many years. And having direct access to Boulder Creek, next slide. I'm gonna pass it over to Amy with Sherz Atkins to talk about design, as I know that was an area of a lot of questions and at the last meeting, next slide.
Thank you. So looking at the site, there is just a kidney bean shape area that is actually developable onsite.
I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, but you are, you're, you sound like you're underwater.
Okay, if I speak a little more loud, loud enough. I just have to project over my laptop. So there is this kidney bean shape that's on the site that is the area that is developable on the site. And so the footprint of the proposed buildings are roughly the same size and area as the existing hotel. And the buildings are situated carefully in the landscape in response to this, this creek and the floodplains. And I might have Kevin help on, on our team, so we have our massing strategy, which it also responds to the site, but Kevin, if you want to walk us through these.
Sure, thanks Amy, so I know there's some comments in the, in the last conversation about how large the buildings are and what the, that they are fairly boxy. And we just wanted to share a little bit of the process, I think this was provided certainly for design advisory board and probably for the initial concept plan of our top concept or you know, the, the initial response to a site from a developer point of view might be what's on the top left of three kind of courtyard buildings or something surrounded by parking or, you know, encapsulating parking. But we intuitively felt that this wasn't the right approach to the site and that we felt like this really needed to respond to the site by opening up to the creek. So that started to inform the design by removing those components, which does take away, of course, some developable area. But really focusing on the feature of the site, opening to the south and then responding to the creek, really the, the arc of the path that we've created through their response to the geometry of the creek. And then reducing scale along the creek where that's certainly the most sensitive area where we want to be mindful of the height of the buildings. And then accentuating the points of entry by a different change, you know, change in material, utilizing wood at the entry points of the building and you know, different, different entry components and the entry pavilion associated with the far east building. And then really being informed by the circulation of the site, allowing the green space within the, that we're creating and increasing along the creek to, to enter into the site and become integral to the buildings and the overall landscape, so I think we had had that in the concept meeting that we had quite some time ago, but we didn't share that and there were some new members of the board that might not have seen where that strategy origin originated. Well, let's look at the next one. And there was some concern about the materials last time as well. And this is a discussion we did have with planning board that there was a concern perhaps that there should be more materiality distinction between buildings. And we wanted to emphasize that we, we thought about this quite carefully in terms of an ombre approach to the brick of going from a lighter brick material to a darker brick material with both of those in place. And they sort of span across the buildings as you go down the creek so that your lighter materials are at the west end of the creek, west end of the site, and then we do change as we approach the east end of the site, which is where most of the public spaces are. And then similarly on the north end of the project that there is a materiality strategy there, and this is something we worked quite carefully with design advisory board, we really appreciated their comments about it feeling like the backside of a building, which is true, Olson Drive presently is very much a service, it is the tail end of a Safeway, it's, it's a service alley. And D A B and staff both encouraged us to contemplate what would it look like if that changed down the line? So how would Olson Drive be activated? And that caused us to reconsider our materiality strategy where we have three stories over one or one story over three. And adding several entries on the north side as well as adding an accessible entry on the west side was a consideration that wasn't there previously. And then really looking at reconfiguring the building articulation of between buildings two and three, which are the middle and the most westerly buildings. Anything on that one? So this shows a little bit more about that ombre approach of what we're trying to do with the bricks. The brick color as we approach through, it's hard on screen, it doesn't even look great on mine. This, this is masonry, but it does look in these, you know, and viewed online, if we had nice big boards in front of you, it would look, you know, it would look like brick. And it doesn't so much right now, but we did add images of, you know, the specific brick material that we're thinking of using associated with that.
If I might, you have three minutes left.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and here's that, that view along the north side, adding the, the entry and the, the wraparound corner balcony. So maybe if we want to jump to the access plan and T D M, we'll have, I think we have Cassie here with Fox Tuttle, so she can walk us through.
Hi, thank you, I'm Cassie with Fox Tuttel, so I will run through quickly. We have a pretty forward-thinking T D M plan. And we are looking at different items such as giving a monthly benefit back to this, the students that decide not to bring a car to campus and we also have very strong language in the lease to make sure that if they are going to bring a car, they have a place to put it. We also know that students have eco passes and they have the bike share program. We also onsite are gonna have a lot of short term and long term bike parking. And again, a lot of people, a lot of our team has talked about how we are across the creek and there's a lot of multi-use paths that connect around town and especially to school. Next slide. Danica, I don't know if you want to take this slide, but I can do the next ones, yeah.
And we apologize, Chris McGanagann, McGrannahan from L S C who did our T D M is backpacking with his boys, so I'm gonna fill in for him. Our, our T M P plan and transport are, the transportation advisory board and our alignment with the T M P plan, we felt was strong. We have three north, south connections, multimodal connections. We're adding two new ones with the realignment of the Boulder Creek as well as Olson Drive, which is shown on the T M P as a road connection, we are building our half of that and have gotten an access easement across our neighbor's property to do that and the T D M was well received by the transportation advisory board. And as Cassie mentioned, we have an alternative transportation fund as well as paid parking and unbundled parking, next slide. So in terms of the parking reduction, this is the modal shift report that I was mentioning earlier is in terms of the, the, what we're seeing with students in a report from twenty eighteen is that the, the students travel at sixty, sixty-two percent choose non-auto options for all trips within Boulder. So they have been taking advantage of our multimodal system and opportunities. And we feel that those will increase even more with our access to scooter share and with our alternative transportation fund. So there's a lot of data in here, I think this, I'll leave this for questions if you'd like to dive into it. But the point here is.
Your, your fifteen minutes are up, I'm so sorry. Okay, so I'd now like to ask board members if they have questions to raise your hand so I can call on you. And please limit your questions to things that have to do with code and not curiosity. I'm just trying to make sure that we don't end up in sort of the same situation we were in last week, so. Who, if you have a question, please show me your hand and I will call on you. I'm M L.
Thank you, Sarah, I have, I have three questions. I'll, since we're on this slide is up, it says that sixty-two percent of the students prefer non-auto options for all trips within Boulder, so my question is, what percent of the students have a car, regardless of how they get around the city, because this is what we hear again and again and again as people provide the tandem parking and that is that they're gonna bring a car, you're just not going to use it in the city. So do you have statistics on how many people will be bringing a car regardless of how they use it in the city?
So this is the city's data, I would defer to the city transportation engineer if they would be able to answer that question.
Well, I'm asking about student and, and your projected tenants. I, I hear, I hear all the things you're trying to put in place to, you know, help them not need to use a car in the city, but what about if they have a car anyway? Where are those cars gonna go?
Well, we are, either they can park here or offsite, but they wouldn't be allowed to bring a car. And so we're, we're providing those options for them, so they would sign a lease with their parents that says they don't bring a car unless they have a paid parking spot. And then, you know, the idea is maybe some of those cars stay and they use this multimodal or they don't have a car at all. And they would be taking advantage of all of the multimodal opportunities and the enhanced multimodal opportunities. A lot of the CU has done a lot as well, they provide B cycle and the eco pass, and so we're just layering on top of that, we are also talking with Commutify to manage that alternative transportation fund.
That, that's fine, I, I was more concerned about the people who aren't using it for in town. You know, that have a car but aren't, aren't taking advantage of everything you're talking about, I, I, I'll get to my second question. Can you talk or explain, I don't know that this was given before, what, what do you see as the occupancy model, will these be rented by the bedroom?
So there's a range of units from studio to four bedrooms and typically those, every, I believe each person signs their own lease and sometimes they come together as a foursome if they're in the larger three or four bedrooms or three or four. Or they are put together through roommate selection process. And so there's a, as different types of units depending on what kind of situation.
Yeah, I saw that, so we could have, and I did the count on the number of bedrooms and I counted studios and one bedrooms as as one each, that would be nine hundred and forty-four tenants here, does that sound about right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And last question, and this is kind of more big picture. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan identifies this property as The Boulder Valley Comp Plan identifies this property as being in the Boulder Valley regional as being part of the Boulder Valley Regional Center in twenty-eight. So I'm curious as to how what the thinking was regards to the role. This, this is a significant part of that map. It's the it's the kind of southern most edge of what is intended to be a high intensity regional commercial center. And I'm curious as to what the thinking is regards to that significant component of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan.
So the area north of the creek is transitional business, which brings us from the large format, big box retail towards the creek. So this the uses are mix of uses, including housing. And then south of the creek is high density residential. And so that really transitioned south of the creek to the there's a lot of high density residential and more student housing, senior housing south of this. So the the site is providing the land use that was envisioned in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan.
Danica, if I can interrupt you for a minute. It I'm referring to the Boulder Valley Regional Center. Which is this is, this is in one of those Boulder Valley Comp Plan identifies regional centers.
I I would defer to staff on that question. I don't know exactly what, can you repeat the question is how does it conform with the Boulder Valley Regional Center or?
Right. What is the thinking about that? Because that is a high intensity regional commercial center. Is the the way it's described and it talks about housing and all. But this is a question for the applicant. I will ask staff in in a in a different context. I'm just curious as to how the design and planning team considered that Boulder Valley Comp Plan designation in the in the proposal.
Well, it's a high, it's a center of higher intensity. And so this is a higher intensity residential use. And so it does conform with those desired uses of higher intensity in these regional centers. So it's a you know, we have these nodes along the Boulder Valley Regional Center that in which we want to concentrate that intensity. And the site is not suitable for retail or large format retail. So as a residential site, it is kind of meeting those goals of higher intensity. And I'm looking at the BDRC guideline, design guidelines, which it does provide meet all of the design guidelines. And it meets kind of the intensity of use that was envisioned in that region.
Thank you for your for addressing my question. I appreciate it.
No problem.
And that's that's the end of my questions. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, ML. Okay, Mark and then Laura. And again, please focus on code questions.
If I went back to the packet today and later on, when we get to conditions, I might have a condition. But one of the things that my research in site visit today and in rereading the packet. The packet refers to a good neighbor agreement. And yet I couldn't find the good neighbor agreement in the packet. Am I missing it? Or is it a separate document? Or is it not yet complete?
It is complete. I it it has been reviewed at length by the city. It includes information like parking management. Which was something that was significant brought up early on. So we met with all our neighbors to talk about how we would manage parking. It talks about how the property would be managed. I'm looking for it in the packet and I don't know if anyone else on my team.
It's in the packet as attachment I. It's called the applicant's operating plan. Apologies for any confusion on the name.
I'm sorry, I'm going back to the original three part packet from our original meeting date, which was the smaller first portion. And then and then this item was broken up into two pieces. And if anyone could it was a item five B part one or item five B part two. Appendix I, you say.
It's on page one, let's let's see.
Page one thirteen of one forty-one.
One thirteen of one forty-one. Okay, the standard operating plan. Okay, my thirteen of one forty-one is the title page of the operating plan.
Mark, do you want to take a minute to read and I'll let Laura ask her question?
Yes, that that sounds that sounds great unless unless anyone on staff or the applicant can direct me to a more specific page other than.
Why don't you go ahead and read it, Mark? It's probably not so.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, is that I I've 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 found one fourteen of one forty-one or whatever. And I and I have gone through this. And again, it references the good neighbor agreement. But it does not include the agreement itself as far as I could find.
So we Mark, so the the agreement you're talking about, I apologize. In the packet, it's attachment I. It's in part two of the packet toward the back. I will try to find the exact page number where it begins.
Okay, thank you. We'll let we'll let Laura go ahead and.
Mark, I'll come back. I'll come back to you, Laura.
Thank you, Sarah. And thank you to the applicant for their clarifying presentation tonight. I wanted to follow up on, you talked about there is strong language in the lease agreement that talks about parking. And I wanted to bring this into the public meeting that I think in the packet, you say that you propose to include the following language in your lease document. Is this what you were referring to when you said strong language? In the event that the resident does not elect to lease a parking space, resident hereby acknowledges that resident will not be parking a vehicle at the facility and either A does not have a vehicle in Boulder. Or B, resident has arranged to store their vehicle on private property through a separate and unrelated agreement. So they would be signing a lease with their parents that says they're not going to park a car on the public street that they would have to either not bring a car or arrange to park it on private property. Is that what you're talking about, Danica?
Yes, and they would provide proof of that. CU has some long term storage options at Williams Village for long term parking. And there's, you know, they they might find another arrangement, but they would have to provide proof that 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 is what they are doing.
Thank you. That was my question.
Mark.
Just just to clarify. Maybe what my problem is, or maybe I don't understand correctly. I am looking at attachment I in the second portion of the original packet. Hundred and funny, hundred and forty-one pages. Attachment I is the applicant's operating plan. And I so to me, a good neighbor agreement and an operating plan are two different things. In this case, are they the same? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we were asked to rename it from a good neighbor agreement to an operating plan by the city. So that is the same document and and you were right to be confused. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. That's 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 my only item for right now.
Okay, thanks, Mark. George?
Yeah, this is for my own clarity and for the clarity of the board. I think this is a question for staff. We just got a presentation from the developer. The first five slides were titled community benefit. There was a lot of stuff in there, which was great. But I just want to clarify that what was what was talked about, what's what's the city's definition of community benefit? As as relates to how we view it. Because I don't think all those things fall under that.
Charles. I see you, but you're muted.
Yeah, thanks for the question, George. And I may ask Laurel to opine on this also, but from a regulatory perspective, I think the only thing related to community benefit that we're talking about here is the increase in linkage fee for increased height on the site. I think that's the only thing from a regulatory perspective that's considered community benefit. And Laurel, I don't know if you have.
Yeah, I agree. That is the one spot in the site review criteria that applies to this project. That relates to community.
Everything else that was in there was was not related to community benefit. We view it as the city. That's helpful. Secondly, we're this is site review, right? So the inclusionary housing component of this is not necessarily a component of site review as it as it relates to how we review it as planning board, correct?
Laurel, can you reappear?
That's correct. Yes. So the yeah, the inclusionary housing is an administrative process that happens after site review. And there is some stuff in there related to height modifications. But again, that only applies if we get a height modification, then there's a separate administrative process after the site review process that applies equally to all people who get the height modifications, all developments to get high modifications. So that's separate. And then the the height modifications in in that particular section of the code. It says may, so you may allow height modifications. But it's not based on inclusionary housing. It's based on and honestly, it's ambiguous. The code says may, but doesn't directly cite back to conditions. So we recommend sending back to the site review conditions, design, things like that that are inside review.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, George. ML, your hand quickly went up and then went back down. Did you have another question?
You know, I'm I'm kind of waving into staff questions here because I I continue to be, I think when I asked the question at our initial meeting about what was the basis for this height modification, I was directed to the inclusionary housing benefit. And so it sounds like Laurel is saying something different here. Is not the inclusionary housing directly relative to a community benefit that would come into effect? Should the height modification be granted?
Yeah, so in the height modification. And I could be messing this up a little bit. So please, Charles, I saw you pop on. So please feel free to interrupt. So the question is where does inclusionary housing come in with height modifications? Is that right? Yeah. So underneath that particular section of the code, which is under the site review criteria of nine two fourteen. It says planning board may may allow for a height increase or height modification. And then it says that the applicant has to meet certain criteria. And one of the criteria for residential uses is inclusionary housing. We've mentioned linkage fee, etc. And then there's also an alternative community benefit. So it could go one or the other. For our purposes, the city staff prefers it to be under residential uses because we get that increase in inclusionary housing. But that deciding whether or not you get inclusionary housing isn't a part of the actual decision of whether you want to allow high modifications. That is a result of. So if you say we like the additional floor, it's, you know, it's got great design, etc. We want that additional height, then a result of that is that we get more inclusionary housing through that process as an administrative thing before the building permit process. Does that make sense?
So if you take that off the criteria that they're meeting outside of that, I keep looking at those, I think, four or five items that are the option for considering a height modification. Which one is this one meeting?
Yeah, so are the staff's understanding is that they are meeting the inclusionary housing, the residential uses? Yes, I know it's a little bit confusing. So it says that planning board may approve high modification. If you approve high modification, then they have to increase inclusionary housing. So the the may is ambiguous. It's not tied to any sort of conditions in the code.
So those criteria under the height modification requirements or it needs to meet one of these criteria. None of those say inclusionary housing. And so I'm wondering which one of those are we going for? And I'm hearing you say we're going for inclusionary houses. Are we going to catch twenty-two here? Should I?
I think about the confusion. So under, so you're saying under nine two fourteen. Little H K, I think it is. Additional criteria for height bonuses. And then can you clarify your question just so that we're on the same page?
Which one of the criteria is this asking for a height under if it's not inclusionary housing, if inclusionary housing is not a consideration, we should be using which one is?
So that's the part that I mentioned is kind of ambiguous. So we're saying that residential development's little subsection I is the option that the applicant originally put forward as they will increase inclusionary housing if they get this additional height modification. But the decision on whether or not you're going to allow height modification isn't actually part of this criteria because inclusionary housing is an administrative process that happens after you decide whether or not you get the additional bonus. And so when it says planning board may allow for additional height, it's not based on inclusionary housing. It just says may, it's not tied to any conditions. So we as the city attorney's office recommend tying this sort of decision to some sort of criteria. So we recommend the site review criteria. It doesn't meet things like design, building, etc., all the different criteria that you want. And if it does, if you do want to give the height modification, then they will implement with inclusionary housing. I don't know, Charles, if you wanted to explain it differently, maybe I'm.
That's okay.
That's very, very well.
It's a little confusing. I know. It's just because it's ambiguous with the may and it's not tied to specific like
Right.
criteria. It's just saying, you know, if it is a residential development, if you do get this additional height, if you give that to them, then they will do.
So we can, we can go for the height modification based on whatever we would like.
Yeah, and I recommend doing that to make it more legally defensible later based on criteria in the code. So that would be the site review criteria. It doesn't specifically say look at the site review criteria, but that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Laurel.
And Laurel, just to clarify, the site review criteria does not include inclusionary house.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. Yeah. And this is, I think what
Inclusionary housing, so 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 I I mean, we rephrased it so I understand it. So 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 basically, inclusionary housing is an outcome of of the height modification. But it is not necessarily considered as it relates to site review for that height modification.
Right. And the reason for that is we don't want this, that inclusionary housing to be discretionary. It's if you get this X, Y, and Z thing approved, then administratively, you're going to go through these different things under the inclusionary housing ordinance. It's kind of a separate ordinance.
So just to drive it into the exactness of of site review criteria, I'm looking at BE versus height modifications. Which of those, and there is six options? Which is required? Which of these is it?
So all of these are required of the applicant to show if they're requesting for additional height under E. So my suggestion for when I say site review criteria is to tie it back to those under H subsection H, the criteria for review. Things like, is it compatible with Boulder Valley or on mouse, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan? Does it preserve enhance?
Nine two fourteen is titled site review. And this is, and this is B. This is an item under site review. So you're saying it wouldn't necessarily that BE has nothing, those aren't the criteria we are to be considering beyond IH?
Excuse me, I I'm I'm actually searching Munich code. I just want to be clarified. Nine dash four.
It's the old one, Mark.
Okay, nine dash fourteen. And you said it's a small H, yes?
Oh, I'm saying small B.
Small B.
And then big E, height modifications.
Can I make a recommendation? I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt this conversation, but what I'd like, what I'd like to do. We we can have this dialogue with staff during our deliberations, if you don't mind. Let's, if there are other questions for the applicants, raise your hand. If not, let's go on to the DAB representative and their presentation. If everyone's okay with that. Okay. Who is our, oh, Brendan Ash. Hello, Brendan. I'm sorry. I didn't know your name. I apologize.
Hi, yeah, I'm Brendan Ash. I am. I'm actually the acting co-chair this evening.
Okay. And you'll have five minutes. You'll have five minutes, Brendan.
Okay. And my understanding is that I've I've been asked here to to summarize essentially how the what the meeting was about and our conclusions. how, what the meeting was about and our conclusions for, for the project. Is that correct?
Yes, we'd like to, because there were a lot of questions from the board about the design, DAB's feedback. And I think it would also be helpful if you will explain to us which code criteria you all use for your work, because we use the planning criteria from chapter nine. I do not know if you all also use that planning criteria, whether you use design criteria. So it would be helpful if you just help us to understand which part of the code you reference.
I, I, I mean, I think in general, the, the conversation was based on just, but, but in overall materiality and design concept. So I guess, let me back up a little bit. The meeting that, that we had with the applicant was, I thought was, was very productive. It was very long. And I, and I can see that a lot of that conversation was not reflected in the meeting minutes. So the way that we set up our meetings at DAB is that we'd like to start out, you know, we have the introduction to the project, and then we'd like to start out with something that is, that is, that we really found to be positive about the project and just kind of start the conversation as a conversation and in a positive direction. And then we, we really, as a board, try and focus on the key issues that are given to us from staff and from planning board. And so we really focused on, we had, we had four issues that we focused on for this project. So some, you know, some of these issues had been referenced by planning board and by planning staff, had been referencing whether it was design or planning code. But, but as, as a whole, I think we try and, and really focus on, because this project was so big, we really needed some direction and some guidance and to help the conversation be geared to, to be most helpful to the planning board. So the, the first key issue was the relationship, it was the north facade, essentially, we've, we've touched on that a little bit tonight, that it just seemed a little bit like an alley street elevation, that there wasn't enough material change. The massing of it was, was a little relentless. And that, like, the finessration was broken up, and huge parts of the facade were, were missing finessration and any relief. I think the ground plane. We talked about how the ground plane was, and I, that's a common thread throughout this whole meeting was that because of this being built in the floodplain, it had to be on this podium. And so the podium being a design constraint and issue, you know, what are some techniques in detailing architectural material uses that we, and, and also circulation uses and entries that we could help break up this podium feel and this back of house feel and transformers and circulation. So that, so our recommendation was, it seems, you know, in the packet that I looked at tonight, the materials of that, or the elevations that were shown in the, in the packets, it seems like that north elevation has really come a long way. I think that a lot of those recommendations for key issue one were, were heard and recognized. I think key issue number two was to review and provide recommendations to help improve circulation patterns and wayfinding for different use types. That was a little, that was a, it, it did open up a good conversation and discussion about the perimeter parking lot areas and, and then how some of the access was in between buildings and because there was the podium and the, and the floor plane height changes, the, there was an issue with accessibility and the accessible entrance being less desirable and a little harder to find, a little harder to navigate to. And I think that that was I think that that has also been, been looked at, hopefully. And then key issues three and four, I think, really led to a long discussion about massing and just sort of overall the overall treatment of, of the building, you know, on the site. And that, that led to quite an extensive conversation about the the elevations of the interior courtyard space where, you know, the residents are, which seems to be a little bit more of a private space, were really well detailed. There was, there was good materiality, good material changes, good change in plane change, and there were, with good use of grading, I thought that it worked really well, but I think the DAB's recommendation was to bring a lot of that detailing that was happening in the middle of the courtyards to the outside, to the public facing facades of the building. And in particular, the facade, I think, that I was struggling with was the east side. So you, where you had kind of this gateway into Boulder, and the east facade did have a parking lot, and then it had this platform. And then it had, which was, which was somewhat blank. And then it, it, and then it just sort of had this same continuous parapet line going all the way across the entire east facade of that, of that first building, or yeah, I guess building one, yeah. So our recommendations were to explore additional landscape treatments, you know, creating somewhat of a landscape buffer or a landscape zone to accommodate or hide, I guess, some of, some of that platform that, that was a little less, that was less detailed. And then the buildings two and three, they, if you look in that 3D model, they tend to have a, a step down or sort of a tiered design to them when you're going from north to south, they do step down. And I, I've found it interesting that this building one, which is, again, this gateway elevation, east elevation, looking to the, to twenty eighth street, or, you know, highway thirty six, that, that one building didn't have the step down. So while the, you know, height of the building, I didn't necessarily, I don't think we necessarily took issue with, it was more the, sort of the relentless parapet height that was happening across the east elevation. And then the north, the north elevation, like I already, I guess I already touched on that, and then there were other DAB members that were talking about the west elevation and how, you know, accessing CU and that, there's more of a pedestrian circulation, public circulation happening on, you know, the streets to the west. And so how to treat that elevation with some level of respect and materiality and not as a, just a back of house garage entry type facade.
Brendan, we may, we ask you questions?
Yes, please.
All right, I know I have a question, George has a question, I'm going to guess ML has a question, since she's the, no? So my question, first of all, thank you very much for that explanation and contextualizing the framework you all use to provide feedback. At any point, was there any discussion about trying to in have a new building that reflects the historic components of the old, the current building? I'm not saying to use what's there, but to capture some of that beautiful flagstone, river stone shape or wall that right now is so, is it such an iconic piece of design? Was there any discussion of that at all?
That, no, that did not come up in our meeting.
Okay, thank you, that was my question. George?
Yeah, thanks, Brendan, that was super helpful to understand your process. I, a question relative to the east facade, especially with the outcome of what we're seeing as planning board now, do you feel that that reflects the direction that DAB wanted as it relates to, you talked about this sort of unrelenting mass and sort of featureless, lack, lack of any sort of articulation relative to the parapet? I'm still seeing that on the east side, I'm curious what your perspective is on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was trying to do side by side comparisons of, of what, you know, what we originally were looking at, and then what was in the planning board packet today. And I, I think some of the elevations have, like I said, the north street elevation, I think really has improved quite a bit. But I, I am still concerned about the east elevation. I don't know if a lot was really changed in it, other than that there, there is nice landscape shown. Yeah, I just, I think it's mostly just trees were added, which is what we talked about. We did ask for some, some element of landscape to help break up that, that bottom base. And, you know, hopefully in addition to some additional architectural articulation or, or detailing, or, you know, we, we mentioned that it would be nice to see a material change to call out the building's base. And it looks like that was sort of, I don't know if that was done, it looks like that's just grass. To kind of give the building an element of maybe of some grounding, but that was, that was a recommendation, not necessarily set in stone.
Okay, so just to, just to understand a little better, so if, it, it, obviously you're representing the board, not just yourself, so I, I'm not looking for a specific feedback, but as, as far as you see that east elevation, that gateway elevation, the general board's feedback was provide some breakup of that mass, and so far as you see it beyond landscaping, that has not happened?
Correct, I mean, I, I yeah, it was mentioned in the DAB meeting that, that, that it was curious, the buildings two and three had that stepped tier and to break up the massing, and building one did not, and it seemed like that to me, it would be the most, I mean, not to me, but that seems to be one of the most important fingers of that project, to have some relief in massing.
Excellent, that's scrum.
Okay, any, Brendan, thanks so much. Is there anyone else on the board? Whoops, what is happening? Who has questions for Brendan? Okay, great, Brendan, thank you so much. You are welcome to stay or welcome to go about your evening, but thank you very, very much for joining us tonight, really.
Yeah, thanks for having me, and the general consensus is, as a, as a board, we would, we'd be happy to help additionally, or if you want another quick review, or just let us know.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Okay, we are now, am I correct, Charles, that we're now going to start planning board deliberations? We don't have anything else on our list of things before planning board celebrations?
That's correct.
Okay, awesome. All right, well, thank you to everyone who presented tonight. Thank you for coming back after a two week break. I think what we, what I'd like to, what I think we're going to do is I'm going to go down the line of people as I see them on my screen and ask you for your feedback, your thoughts, your concerns, your questions, your comfort level, and if you have a condition to at least tell us generally what that condition references, we're not going to take a straw pull yet, I just want to try to get everybody, everybody's ideas on the table first, and then we can shake the conversation from there. So ML, do you mind if I start with you?
Thank you, Sarah. My the outstanding issue I have, and I don't know if it's a question, or what is, this is part of the Boulder Valley Regional Center, which, if you look at that little map, really is the center, right? If the green belt provides an outline, this, this really demarcates a center. And I am not understanding how this meets that, I think, significant designation through the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So I think maybe I would benefit from hearing, I read what the staff had to say, and it talked about co-locating housing. I have, I have questions about so many questions. So that is my really big umbrella, which is why I wasn't, I'm not keen on dissecting the building per se, but I can speak to the four questions for consideration that the staff had put out there and reference specific criteria and policy about specifics. But I think beyond that, bigger than that, is what's happened to the Boulder Valley Regional Center? And why aren't we talking about its role in trying to have this sort of large scale planning relationship to what was identified as, hey, this is a commercial center, and it should have some attention paid to it? And I'm, I, I just, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing that. And so again, if staff wants to weigh in, I think this this is the conversation I'm really keen on, because it's not just about the university, this site is not just about the university, and it's got this significant relationship to the Boulder Creek, and yet there really isn't any, it, it could do something marvelous to that regional center by opening up to the creek and creating a relationship, sure, CU and the creek and Boulder and the regional center. So there's, I think, a very big, huge missed opportunity here that I just don't understand how this.
Okay, thank you, ML, I'm going to go through the line and then I'll come back. So Kurt, you're next.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, overall, I feel that this concept is appropriate. I feel this is a very appropriate location for a significant amount of student housing. It's kind of a hop, skip, and a jump up to campus. It's a nice walker bike ride up the creek path and then a full sum or straight up twenty eighth. And so I think that the general concept is completely appropriate and something that we desperately need, frankly. We hear, I'll say the same thing that I said on the twenty seven hundred Morehead Project, we hear time and again how much we need student, student oriented housing. And this is very much student oriented housing, and I think that providing a lot of options for students here will take help to take a little bit of the pressure off some of the neighborhoods that are feeling a lot of pressure, the Hill and Martin Akers and so on. So I think it's, it's very appropriate from that standpoint. The overall site design is not something that I'm wild about, but it's largely driven by the floodplain. If it weren't for the floodplain, I would be pushing for something very different. But, but given that, I think it is what it is. I really appreciate DAB's input. I think that they achieved some, some great improvements, especially on that north elevation. elevation. So I really appreciate that. I think that the parking reduction is appropriate given the 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 operating plan that they have in mind and, you know, that it'll be students. I would love at some point, if this is approved and goes forward, I would love at some point, a study or a report on the actual parking utilization of the residents here too, so that we can get some data on, is this working? Is it right? Is it wrong? And so on. In terms of the use review, I I feel that the rationale is met under point C, not by the description, not by the justification that staff used, because it meets the housing need identified in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So I do feel that it's met, but you with a different rationale than staff identified. The in terms of the design, I feel that the design is rather busy, actually. And the reference images that they showed seem much simpler and cleaner. But I appreciate that DAB actually wanted more detailing, more articulation. And it sounds like the board, some of the other members of the planning board do too. And to me, that's largely a matter of aesthetics. And so I'm not as concerned about that. I think that the proposed amendment to the Boulder Valley Regional Center Connection Plan is justified. And I feel that the proposed first floor residential use on 28th Street is justified, given that there is such a large setback across the parking lot from 28th Street. And there's really kind of a lack of walkability along 28th Street. And so I'm less concerned about pedestrian interest from 28th Street than I might be elsewhere. Just to respond to ML's point about the Boulder Valley Regional Center, my reading of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan description of the Boulder Valley Regional Center says is, it says, the BVRC is a primarily commercial area, providing retail at a range of scales, restaurants, offices and hotels. There is also some high density housing. So to me, I'm not seeing that this is inconsistent with the BVRC plan or guidelines. And certainly, the rest of the BVRC remains primarily commercial. My one concern, I guess, more than concern, the one condition I have for this relates to the direct access off of 28th Street, which I find is not consistent with Boulder revised code 995C, which is the Site Access Control section, which says, well, maybe I won't read it all at this point. But it says that there should only be one access point or curb cut to property. That there shouldn't be a direct access for residential, no residential structures shall have direct access onto an arterial which 28th Street clearly is. And access should be taken from the lowest category street, which in this case would certainly be Olson Drive and not 28th Street. So I would propose a a condition that that direct access to 28th Street be eliminated from the site plan.
Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Oh, sorry. And 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 just to 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 explain that, I feel that I think implicitly a variance to this 995C was given, but I find that that is not consistent with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan policies 6.01, 6.02, 6.05, 6.08 and 6.09, which are all related to transportation, multimodal transportation, transportation safety and so on. Okay, now.
Thanks, Kurt. Okay, I'm gonna go to George, and then I'll go to Laura, and then I'll go to Lisa, and then I'll go to Mark. So George, you're next.
Okay. Try to make it relatively brief on on my thoughts. I think overall, student housing is an appropriate use here. I think it's desperately needed, as I've mentioned before. I think where, and overall, the the approach to the site is good. I think where my where my hesitations lie are in the maximized height modifications that the applicant is requesting. The, I thought DAB's, I thought DAB's use of unrelenting long expanses, especially facing 28th, don't sit well with me. I want to remind people when I see a lot of new developments that, you know, landscaping at the ground level is is not taking care of that and and how that how that manifests over time is is not terribly enforceable by the city. And when we see new developments, we see dead trees and you can even see it on the where the Daily Camera Building is right now, where we've got basically these tree wells that are completely scraped, and you've just got concrete there. And so I don't expect that to happen here. I do think we need to pay attention to the structure that's permanent and won't change over time. And right now, that facade, especially on 28th Street as the gateway of Boulder, I think it would be a travesty if that was approved like that. So I'd want us to consider that as one of the main areas that I'd like to focus in on this evening. And then you know, as ML brought up, these are, these units are rented by the bedroom. So we've got 940 plus tenants. And while I appreciate that the applicant put in their leases, the idea of them signing some sort of pledge that they're not going to bring a car, it's completely unenforceable from a city standpoint. And I don't, I don't think that's practical in reality. I think it's a it's a nice thing, but I don't think it really does much. And so I'm concerned, again, I brought it up last time, with the the parking ratio related to specifically the height modification and bringing those things more into a reasonable alignment, given that this is luxury student housing. And I expect a lot of these people, even if they're not using their cars, to have to put their cars somewhere. And if we don't put them here, they're going to end up throughout the neighborhoods and putting more pressure on 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 the streets. And so those are my 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 major areas of focus that that I'd like to discuss more this evening. Other than that, I don't have much of an issue. Thank you.
All right, I said Laura next. Yeah, Laura, you're next. Jeez.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief and say I agree with just about everything that Kurt said about the appropriateness of the site for the proposed use. And ML, I know you read the staff packet, but it's so huge. I just wanted to point to one piece that I thought was compelling to me in terms of why this is not commercial, a commercial use. And that is in part two, page 19, where they talk staff's rationale. They talk about the significant flood restrictions on the site limit the placement of the buildings and prevent the location of commercial uses close to 28th Street as intended by this code provision. A significant setback is instead required from this major thoroughfare due to the location of the high hazard zone. So it feels like it's not a great location for a commercial use because of all of the flood restrictions on the site and the limited access to the pedestrian frontage there on 28th Street. And I do recall reading that with these regional centers, they are intended to provide not only commercial uses, but also transition from higher intensity uses to lower intensity uses like residential. And so this this project, the argument here, whether one agrees with it or not, is that it does provide some transition with those step downs towards the creek and it not being a high intensity commercial use, but being residential instead, it's providing a transition between the more residential uses and the commercial uses in the BRVC Boulder Valley Regional Center. And I do recall reading that those transition zones are intended to be located within the higher intensity use. So it's not up to the neighborhood to provide the transition zone. It's up to the BRVC Boulder Valley Regional Center to provide the transition zone. And I see you're nodding your head. So cool. We're on the same page with that. So I don't have any conditions that I would propose to attach. I'm interested in in hearing and discussing my colleagues' conditions, and I assume that now is not the time to be responding to each other about the conditions, but just talking about our own. And so I think that I will, I will stop there. But I would ask my colleagues to consider where exactly is it with parking? If we're concerned about students not parking on site, but parking in the neighborhoods, where is that opportunity for them to park and create havoc for for other neighborhoods? Because in walking around this site, which I did for about an hour, you know, they could they could park in the the Safeway Shopping Center parking lots, but they probably would get booted or towed, especially if they're planning that as their long term plan. There is residential to the west, but they're going to have their own parking areas that I assume that they monitor. And there's parking to the south, but there's not really a lot of like free street parking like we see in some of these proposals where there's free street parking all around. So I just would ask people to be thinking about where are we afraid that they're going to be going to be parking for the long term with a car that they keep all semester? So I'll stop there.
All right, Lisa, you're next, and then Mark.
Thank you, and thanks, everybody else. I'll try to be relatively quick. So some of my concerns that I won't go super in depth on include, I'm not necessarily opposed to the proposed height, but when I see the design and the parking on site and so on, just altogether, I find it not terribly compelling, which makes me sad because I feel like this is kind of a major entrance to the city. You've got a major frontage under 28th and I understand that there are a lot of site constraints here and also financial constraints and desire to maximize the buildable envelope, but gosh, I wish I liked this more. I think the regional center thing is very interesting as well. You know, I wish that there was more mixed use and kind of transitional use built into the actual building, you know, and lovely cafes and such and things, you know, along the creek would be really, more of that would be nice to see. I don't mind that it's student housing beyond big things that are beyond our control. I do think it is a sensible location for student housing. I don't enjoy the fact that CU doesn't choose to invest in student housing, and so this gets externalized to the city and to developers who necessarily provide it. But that's not a problem we're going to fix tonight. For the parking, I mean, I also, and I guess if the city signed off on it, perhaps I shouldn't be concerned about this, but I worry about all these cars and what is essentially a conveyance zone. It seems like the cars got pushed into some areas where maybe a building couldn't go in that. Maybe I'm just misunderstanding, but that puzzles me a bit because cars float real quick. And I, yeah, I don't quite get that. I do appreciate the effort put toward doing some adaptive reuse and retaining some of the small buildings and spaces for small business owners, particularly the daycare and other longstanding businesses. I really appreciate that. I think we talked about that earlier, and I just thank you for doing that. And what else? I guess, yeah, I feel like I'm harping on the design a little bit, but and again, maybe it looks really different. And if we're in person and looking at the cool brick cladding and the ombre, I would be like into it, but it isn't really reading, you know, and I almost, you know, I kind of agree, like, I almost wish it were a little more stark and like more modern materials or something kind of interesting. It just feels like a bunch of boxes covered in brick and maybe that's me having poor aesthetics and not appreciating the design. I'm not an architect. But yeah, it's a major, it's a major development and in a very visible location and at least for me personally, it doesn't do a whole lot. So I'll leave it there. Other people are doing a better job of calling out specific instances and so on. And I'm curious to see what conditions might come forward, but similar to a lot of people, I just have questions about design and concerns about parking, I have concerns about heights and how all those play with each other.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, Mark, your turn.
Thank you. First, I want to concur with Kurt Kurt and Laura that in general, I think this fulfills many missions of the BBCP. It fulfills a need for student housing that the community and planning board have requested, supported, and so as council. So it it does all those things. I want to address ML and the BVRC, and I want to just read one additional item that in the same section Kurt read where he pointed out, it says, there is also some high density housing. It goes on to say, the following plans and guidelines continue to guide redevelopment and evolution of the area into a more attractive and pedestrian bicycle and transit transit friendly place. You don't get more attractive pedestrian areas until you have density that that warrants it. And I think this applicant has done a great job with their TDM plans. And so I think it fulfills the BVRC, which I also know is a plan that was completed in 1998. So we are somewhere around 25 years old on that plan. And it is, if you look at it, it is, it is out of date, and it gets short shrift in the BBCP. And I think rightly so, because it's one of those things that we haven't updated. And and it might still provide some guidance for us, but I think this project falls within the guidance of the BVRC and the BBCP. Going on to my concerns or possible conditions, so I'm going not to type tonight. It is not so much a transportation. Oh, I want to, okay, one more, one more thing I want to address is I also concur with Laura that I surveyed the site. I go by there all the time, but I went around it today and looking at parking and, you know, we recently had a anyway, predatory parking control is a thing in Boulder, and it will be very expensive if someone thinks they are going to park their car at the Safeway Center or to the to the to the south in the other residential area across the creek. There just isn't. Or 29th Street, all those places have two hour public parking permits, and those are those are enforced. So I don't have a concern with the people violating their agreement with the parking. They will be punished for that. Finally, I would note that, you know, we we have goals in the BBCP and as a city about parking and about not letting parking dominate design, dominate our need for housing. And we will never change until we change. And, you know, if we continue to support the status quo, which is overparked and seas of asphalt and kowtowing to automobile storage, we will never change. And so I think we have to take a view of this that is forward looking and that parking and a parking reduction are stated goals. And here, an applicant has come to us with a written agreement with their tenants and a plan that supports a parking reduction. So I remain unconcerned about that. My one concern and possible condition is the public-private mix of spaces to the south of the building and the multi-use path. I am concerned and I have a condition prepared that would mandate written agreements that those spaces that are noted as public in the packet in yellow on page I'll give you a page number here. Anyway, page 135 of 160 of the of the two sections, section one. There's a nice drawing that denotes a very large percentage of the property to the south of the building as public space. And by denoting that as public space, the applicant is not deeding that to the city. They are saying, we are going to allow public access. What I'm looking for is an acknowledgement that that is not only public access, but that the property owner in this case cannot close that public access at some future date and future time geographically or temporally without agreement from the city. That if they are designating that as public space and that is part of our criteria for approving the project, then I simply want that to be spelled out in writing so that at future times, when someone says, when some other property owner, these properties change hands, as is allowed in our, in our system, some new property owner doesn't say, well, hey, I don't, I, I, I'm not cool with that. I want to close the creek path at night. I want to close it in the morning. So I have a condition prepared to address that. And I trust the applicant currently, but, you know, we all, we all move on, we all pass. And it needs to be in writing in such a way that it can never be misconstrued as as possible private property that the public does not have access to. So that's my concern.
Okay, Mark, thank you very much. I'm sure at some, I have comments, but I'm just, I'm sure that at some point Laurel will want to check in on whether the legality of that kind of control over someone's private property. But Laurel, can we come back? We'll come back to that.
Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah.
Okay. So thank you all for your comments. I agree with George's concern about the, I'm not exactly sure the phrase used, but the lack of alignment between the height variance and the parking variance. I think the, I'll just read what I have here. The applicant requests significant and perhaps unprecedented variances, which if approved, would set the stage for other developers to request the exact same variances, which could create a domino effect that would render our regulations almost meaningless. The, the reference in the code is nine dash nine dash six F three. The manager may, the city manager may approve reductions of up to and including 25% of the parking requirements. If and then there's a list of things that they have to meet. There are ors, not all four, but there are ors. The applicant is asking for a 52.2% parking reduction of the 728 parking spaces required by code. You should know that only a request of that size is extremely rare. And actually, the only types of buildings that tend to get a 50% parking reductions are those that do not have a lot of parking, like the jail and warehouses and storage. This is none of those things. This is a very densely, very dense housing development. And I think it would be a terrible mistake on our part to begin the process of, of allowing a dense development with people who will have cars to not have to provide at least parking within the realm of what is, what the city is, the city allows the city manager to, to approve without coming to planning board. The, so the applicant's asking for this 52.2% parking reduction. And then they've tried to move the goalposts by reframing the parking reduction request from what's required by code, by picking their own number and asking for a 30% reduction from the 502 parking spaces that their own transportation consultants calculated in their own analysis. That's the Fox tunnel analysis. So I think the project does not meet the nine dash nine dash six requirements. I think the TDM plan is very nice, but it's inadequate to the reality of how many cars are likely to be associated with the individuals expected to reside at this proposed building. As, as George noted, the LEAF language is essentially unenforceable. In addition, the alternative transportation fund of $75 a year barely covers a few Lyft rides. And a Zipcar membership may be $35 a year, but that ignores the minimum per hour cost, which is $11 an hour or $80.50 a day. The, and I think ML was right to point out that none of the data has anything to do with how students use cars to get out of town, to go hiking or skiing or into the mountains for whatever recreation or pleasure they might be pursuing. So, and I would argue that Fox Tunnels report is based on a significant and unproved assumption that to, they know, Fox Tunnel notes that the parking generation manual does not have data pertaining to student housing and that there's no national standard to estimate parking demand for student housing, which to, I think it was Kurt, to Kurt's point, that's probably something we need some data on. Probably nationally, there's needed some data. So instead, Fox Tunnel is developed its student parking demand formula from a totally different housing population, which is multifamily housing mid-rise using trip generation data, which is not the same as parking data. Instead, the applicant's consultant worked on the assumption that the difference between trip rates of the two residential types would be the functional equivalence of the difference between multifamily and student parking demand. Now, we already know because we, all of us here have seen a proposal from an applicant who acknowledged that students store their cars. They don't use them that often, but they store their cars. So to ML's point, there are a lot of students who have cars. They don't use them every day because they don't need to. They can walk or bike to campus. But they have cars because they use them on the weekends. And this, I think this request for a 52.2% reduction is just, it's, it's too much. So I am going to offer a condition that tries to find a happy medium that might help us get to a place where the mass and scale of the building is reduced, but it's matched to a parking, it's matched to a reasonable parking reduction. So what I've been thinking about is sort of backwards math is how I've been thinking about it, which would allow the 348 parking spots, which we know is the maximum that they can fit, given the floodplain issues. Right? We get that. But would require the applicant to reduce the mass and scale of the building until those 348 parking spots are equivalent to, say, 30 or 35% or maybe even 40% parking reduction. So it's a moving number because you can't just, you don't just lock off part of the building. You, if that number changes over time as the number of dwelling units or beds changes. But I, it doesn't put us in the position of trying to tell them how to change the building, but rather creates an instead, put them in the sort of having to change the building. Maybe that would create some opportunities to address some of the design issues that still seem unresolved, even with DAB's interventions and would also bring the parking reduction into a more normal range rather than this extreme range, which, as I said, to me, sets up a very unhealthy standard that we will see many other student housing developers address or try to take advantage of. And the other thing I want to talk about, which is something I don't remember who brought up, maybe it was Lisa. And this is not, it's not going to, we're not going to solve it tonight. But the, the idea that CU has externalized the cost and impacts of student housing onto the city is something that the city needs to address. The university has a lot of land that they have not yet developed and they could partner with these private developers to build student housing, which would leave some of this land for housing for people who work here, live here, families who work and live here. In addition, the argument that somehow this will get students out of single family homes is, will only be true if CU stopped adding 800 to 1,000 students a year. There, you can't, if you keep stuffing people into the city, I mean, if you keep bringing students to the city, and this is not the student's fault, this is CU's business model. Building more housing, unless you cap the number of students, just builds more housing. It does not take students out of single family homes. So I, I just want to, I found that argument that the chambermaid in the last meeting to be in, I did not find it have much validity. So I think there's a way to balance some of the concerns that I've heard raised here, which have to do with mass and scale, has to do with whether the height modification is a good, there's a good argument for the height modification and addressing the parking modification, which to me, in my mind, is extreme and it's this sort of formula. And I'm open to negotiation on what that percentage is, but I think that's a way to approach it. So that will be my condition. Wait a minute, Kurt, Laurel just came on board. So Laurel, what did you have to tell us?
I said a couple of comments on some of the conditions and thoughts that were brought up, just legal comments. So when there's a good opportunity.
Fine opportunity, and then that can help us frame our conversation going forward.
Great, great. I'm going to read off my notes a little bit. Sorry if I'm looking at the other screen. So one of the things that I wanted to just clarify, the first one is with Kurt's note about getting rid of the curb cut on 28th. There are a couple of concerns about that. One, we'll have to go through the TDM process re-review again. That was also done with CDOT, so we're not sure of our entire authority around that. It sounds like potentially there is access concerns with the Regency Center to the north. So just some things to think about with, with that particular getting rid of the curb cut. It would mean we would have to go through that process of reviewing it again.
Laurel, I'm sorry, I don't entirely understand that comment. So you're saying that the city and CDOT went through a planning process and decided
Because it's on 28th.
Yeah, because it's on 28th Street and decided to keep that curb cut. And that if we as planning board made it a condition to eliminate it, then that would require the city and CDOT to renegotiate, and there's no guarantee that CDOT would agree to that.
Right. And I don't know, it sounds, it looks like Brad just jumped on, so maybe he has a little bit more knowledge about that one.
I can elaborate a little bit too. So the site plan that was brought forward to you with staff's review assumes a certain set of traffic patterns, including volume to the north and internal circulation for safety and such. So if there were a condition that that access were removed, not only does it get into the discussion with CDOT, but it would mean that whatever did get approved would have to be re-reviewed for compliance with a variety of things that that are addressed through life safety, circulation and volume onto Arapahoe. All of those premises that were brought forward would need to be re-reviewed and brought back to you then with confirmation that those could either be accommodated or not under the revised plan with a condition. We don't know that it would or wouldn't, but we would need to, we would need to be able to verify that before we could move to building permit.
Okay, so let me just double check. You're just, you're, you're just giving us fair warning that we can, we could conceivably agree to Kurt's condition, but that does not mean that Kurt's condition is, would end up being enforceable. Is that correct?
Well, yes, in the sense that it may not result in a plan that meets various criteria for access for safety and things and, and volume, you know, limits of volume on the wrap.
Okay.
I just want to ask a question of what happens if what we approve through site review is deemed not feasible from a traffic perspective through the city's negotiations with CDOT? Does that mean that this project can't be built because it doesn't comply with what we approve through site review or what happens?
So CDOT, I'm trying to clarify, CDOT is just one element that the others would be also access to the site for fire safety, life safety issues and access to the north in terms of volumes under wrap. Not prejudging whether that's possible or not, it's just that this plan does meet all those criteria. We would have to reevaluate whether it did under revise that.
Thank you. That's helpful to clarify that it's not just CDOT. But if we approve something through site review that ultimately ends up being infeasible from a traffic perspective, for whatever reason that the city can't approve it, then what happens? Does the site review then prevent the project from being built and the applicant has to start over and come back? Or because we would have approved a site review and said, this is a condition. So legally, what, what happens there?
We'd have to do a modification, I think.
Possible outcome.
We'd have to do a modification.
I think you do a modification, but one more way we could address it is tailor the condition to say, you know, upon approval or something like that, we could tailor it, that the city manager has the final say on that particular part of the approval. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
Laurel, I think you have other things you wanted to comment on.
Yeah, Brad.
This is well important since Kurt has his hand up if it's relevant to that question, I'm happy to stay on it.
Okay, Kurt, is your question relevant to this particular moment in time?
Yes, I have one question about that. And I'm just wondering, is there specific, Brad, is there specific code that relates to the, the fire safety aspects that you're talking about? Is that something in the DCS?
Good evening, Edward Stafford, Senior Manager of Engineering. From a fire and life safety access, it would come under the fire code requirements. We would want to review to ensure that they have adequate access, which is a concern, given the number of units in the limited access that would be here and those limited movement points. So we would need to take a review of that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I believe there are also agreements with the Regency Shopping Center as well that we would need to evaluate for like loading in trucks and things. Um, yes, yeah, apologies. That was, that was a little bit long. The second thing I wanted to touch on, we had previously talked about height modifications. I wasn't sure if ML, you wanted me to clarify that. It didn't sound like that was a condition or are you good? I just wanted to clarify with that.
You know, I think, I think your point that there is some amount of vagary to the, let's see if I can find the.
I can tell you what the number is. It's nine two fourteen H, little h, two big K is where the.
Right. Yeah. So I, I think that the amount of vagary that's in there is just the way it is. So I, I don't need any more conversation about it. I thank you for your, for helping.
Wanted to follow up with that.
Right.
Yeah. And if it comes up again during conditions, we can talk about it a little bit more. And the other piece that I wanted to just mention is the parking code section that Chair Silver you had talked about. We just wanted to clarify that the code section for parking reduction is nine two fourteen little h, two big L, as opposed to, I think you said nine nine six.
Yeah, I was referring to the part of the code that describes what the parking.
City manager.
What the number is, I think, how they, that what's required, given the number of bedrooms or dwelling units that is part of that. So I was referencing that because they're, 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 that's the code that they are, they're not meeting that number.
Great. Yeah. And then one other one for member McIntyre. One of the things you'd mentioned was open space, making sure that that's available to the public. One thing I wanted to note is if they, because it is part of the approved plans, if they did want to change it and make it not available to the public, it would have to go through a site review amendment in order to change any of that. So I don't know if that changes your condition, but just wanted to let you know. But that's kind of the, it would have to come back to the city if they wanted to change that.
Oh, I'm, we'll, when we get to.
Yeah, just wanted to let you know.
I might, I might, I might be convinced at, with some additional discussion. Thank you.
Great. That's all I had for now. Thank you for your time.
Kurt, you still have your hand up. Do you have something you wanted to add at the moment?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on your statements about the parking. And my recollection, which could be very false, is that 50% parking reduction is not unprecedented for, for student housing. And I was wondering if staff might be able to weigh in on whether there have been parking reductions of that magnitude issued in past.
For a building, for a building of this density. And I will tell you that I checked with staff before I asked that question, not, not of Charles, it was of Carl. But that's where my data comes from. I didn't just pull it out of thin air, but.
I think the most recent one we did was the hub at seven seven 28th. So that was the former Best Western motel. And that was a 96 unit project where. And that was a ninety six unit project where we did a fifty five percent parking reduction.
Was that the one with the double parking where people were storing their cars thing?
Yes, there is a tandem element to it, I believe.
So did that mean that the parking spots counted as one, the tandems counted as one?
Correct.
So what was really the parking reduction?
I'd have to go back. I'm let him operating off of memory here, so I'll have to go back and. And double check, but I'm happy to do that.
That would be helpful. Thank you. So uh, all right, so it sounds like we have three possible conditions. Um, why don't we discuss? We'll start with Kurt's condition.
Uh, I'm sorry, Sarah. Hey, Sarah.
Yeah.
Can we just take like a three minute break?
Yep, we can even take a five minute break. All right, we'll be brave. We'll break for five minutes. Thank you all. George, has the sun started rising in Sweden?
It never really sets.
Does that make it hard to sleep?
Uh. You know, it's more the it's more the birds. They're just always they're always uh. They're always out there, but uh no, no complaints really. The sunlight's quite nice.
Yeah.
And it's cool here, so.
George, what what part are you in?
I'm in Lund, which is actually a university town. Outside of Melham. Uh great. It's such a it's such a great town. It's 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 actually very similar to um its scale to Boulder.
Hmm, yeah, nice.
Hey, Max. Hi, Max. You're muted. Lisa.
My favorite planning board number.
Uh do we who we missing here, ML? Um just FYI, is is staff back? Charles and Laurel and Brad, are you guys here? Charles is here.
He never leaves.
You never leave. I'm sure it feels that way. Okay, all right. So everybody is here and oops, wait, ML, I just lost you. Oh, there you are. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, we're all here. All right, so it sounds like we have three three possible uh conditions. Um. Uh, but let's do a straw poll on um. We don't have the language exactly yet. We we know that Kurt's condition has to do with um eliminating the curb cut on twenty eighth street. Uh. Uh. Dependent on uh uh all the uh. Feedback that the city would need to get from the. Relevant agencies and and stakeholders. Is that a fair summation, Kurt? Okay, so uh thumbs up if people are comfortable.
Sarah, but before we do a straw poll, can we just talk about it a little bit? Like we wanted to reserve discussion. And so I don't know what people might think are the pros and cons of uh an amendment like that. I'm not ready to do a straw poll without knowing a little bit more about it.
Okey dokey.
I actually do want to know what people think about it. So I guess um if I if I could just say some of the things that I'm curious about. I know the city has this policy that says that for a development, you only get one curb cut and it has to be. On the the least um the smallest street, basically, not big arterials, but the smallest street possible. Is there any limit to that? Like, this is a potentially nine hundred bedrooms. Um and we're talking about putting just one curb cut onto Olson, which is currently an alley. And I think is intended to stay that way for some time. Um, you know, are there any concerns or limitations to the? I've had this concern with other projects as well of. How how many people can get emergency access off of one curb cut to one small feeder street? And so I don't know what the city's thoughts are around that. Or Kurt, maybe you have been part of these discussions and it seems kind of uh from just a uh um. A layperson point of view somewhat inadvisable to try to direct nine hundred people to a very small street in an emergency.
And if I can clarify or maybe ask the question, I think that there are two curb cuts on to. Olson, one from the west parking lot and one from the east parking lot, if that's correct.
So I want to I I this is a question for Kurt or staff. If we if we're counting a curb cut onto Olson, which is an alley, which doesn't. The way I read it and was there today, doesn't get you anywhere. So if you need to exit the site. That you would have to take Olson uh west to Folsom or east to twenty eighth. And so. I I'm I'm unclear. As to how counting curb cuts onto Olson. Kind of satisfy satisfies those uh. Health, life and safety requirements for, like Laura says, for a project of this size. Is Ed or Charles or anyone wanna?
I can certainly give you the staff view if you'd like in terms of uh answering a little bit of what's being asked here. So the first is that in nine nine five side access control, it presumes the starting point is the uh single. And then there are I'll call them criteria in there for additional access, which do relate to things such as circulation, safety. Those types of items. Um you're correct in evaluating right now, this site actually. In terms of access points to public road, road, public right of way has three. There are two on Olson. Um as proposed from the two parking and then their um access, their three quarters limited access to twenty eighth street. Um and so we have found through nine nine five and through the traffic analysis and the circulation material they've supplied. Um that staff's recommendation is that that does meet. The site access control requirements in terms of limiting access, but within certain bounds of ensuring adequate circulation and safety.
I don't know.
You you your condition would eliminate the curb cut on twenty eighth. Is that correct?
For you asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, elim- eliminating the curb cut then is the direct access from east parking lot onto twenty eighth street. So there's there's really two accesses as proposed. Onto twenty eighth street. One is a direct access from the east parking lot and the other one is Olson Drive, right? And so my condition would eliminate that direct access. From the parking lot across the multi-use path there, which to me seems like a dangerous and problematic. Crossing and also is an additional. You know, an additional conflict point over what we clearly are going to have at Olson Drive. And so uh it to me, it feels like it would improve safety. It would improve. Mobility for people walking and biking and just clean up. The 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 streetscape there to eliminate that access directly from the parking lot. Which we know across the multi-use path, which we know are problematic movements. And put the the movement all via Olson Drive, which again to me is. As in my reading of nine nine five C, it's completely consistent with what is being requested there.
So just to clarify some of where my concerns are, um currently that. Access on twenty eighth is the three quarter, which allows the left in. So anybody heading northbound. Um the Olson access is limited to right in, right out. There is not an opportunity to turn that into a three quarter because of the other access points. So the challenge that we I'm concerned from circulation and fire safety, our piece of fire safety is that. Um in order for anybody headed northbound to get into this site. You're gonna have to loop them all the way up to Arapahoe, that down Folsom and through the private property Eastman on Olson Drive into here. So there is a limitation to the maneuverability that occurs with that. Um I would want to have a robust conversation with our fire department in terms of limiting access to. A development of this size in that way and only off of the single twenty foot wide. Um as it will be built in this project, public Olson Drive. So that's where our concerns are.
And and I would say, you know, I I to fully acknowledge those concerns and I don't want to jeopardize. Fire safety in any possible way, uh but I'm trying to, I'm also thinking about the safety of people. Walking and biking along that multi-use path there and also the the access um. Uh the just motor vehicle, the potential for motor vehicle conflicts on twenty eighth. I know that, you know, left turns, uncontrolled left turns are one of our most dangerous movements in this city. And the the northbound left turn off of twenty eighth street would be an uncontrolled. Left turn off of a um very major arterial street across wide and relatively high moving traffic. Relatively fast moving traffic. And to me, that just seems like a very dangerous design.
So so can I just ask, this is existing condition, right? That there is that left turn off of northbound twenty eighth street. And this does cross the multi-use path and it serves the current Millennium Hotel. Do we have uh, you know, is this a hotspot for traffic accidents? Is that is that a dangerous intersection? Does the city consider this currently to be a dangerous intersection?
It has not been identified as a high crash location.
And for the pedestrian movements and bicyclists on the um path, is that is that also included in that, Edward?
Those, yeah, that we be be included in crash data. That's not to say that, you know, there are always a concern at any point when you have a vehicular crossing, of course, of. A bike and pad and a consideration to be made there. So I don't want to say that there's not. No any concern there. It's always a trade off of the the goals and needs that have to be accomplished. So this project is proposing to modify that to. Uh ensure that the entire crossing. So right now, half of that crossing is raised, the multi-use path stays a grade. The project's proposing to raise the other parts of the entirety of the multi-use path is elevated at that crossing.
Uh questions, comments? Are we ready to do a straw poll? Okay, so the straw poll would be, uh, do you support? But um a condition to the motion. That uh would eliminate the curb cut on twenty eighth street depending on stakeholder approval. All right, I see one person. Sorry about that, Kurt. We can we can come back and vote on it. See if we get a second, but for right now it's a one person. All right. Okay. All right, so the second um is the Kurt's second condition, which is about a. Parking utilization study. Um and although this may not be the final language that that is proposed. Essentially, it's that the applicant shall know sooner than two years after the last certificate of occupancy is issued. And no later than three years after the last certificate of occupancy is issued, submit to the city manager a parking utilization study. Using methodology approved by the city manager.
And to clarify, I had not actually intended this, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I had not intended this as an actual condition. I would be fine with it as a condition, um but that had not been my intent.
Okay.
It was just sort of a musing.
All right, well, if you.
But I think it's worth considering it as a condition.
Yeah, I think if it's not meant to be a condition, um then we should set it aside as a matter. Because it would be very helpful since almost everything we get these days is student housing. To have some actual data about student housing, car, parking and utilization. That seems like a valuable piece of information, so we're not all just, you know, making this stuff up.
Well, let's keep it as a condition then and we'll see.
I actually like it as a condition. It seems pretty easy to do and extremely valuable.
Well, it's valuable for one building. It doesn't it it's not. I mean, if you really want a condition. If you really want to understand data, you need to look at more than just one building. So my point is. This would be a requirement of one particular applicant who's building student housing rather than a citywide. Uh evaluation of what is happening at all the student housing, private student housing that we've been approving. Which seems like a more valuable piece of information.
I I think that's true, and I'm not sure that it needs to be either or. Like, I do think that. Um there's value in like a pilot or there's value in. Like we we can at site review attach a condition that this has to be done and we can make that happen. It seems like it's pretty easy for the applicant to do. Um and it wouldn't be a deal killer, hopefully. To do a citywide study would probably require like making it a work plan item and staff involvement and and be a little bit more involved. So I'm not saying I'm against that. I think that's a great idea too, but I don't see why we couldn't get this this one piece of data that would be useful as well.
Laurel.
Um I just want to circle back and say if we do have conditions we needed to be tied to.
the regulations, right back to site review criteria. So just think about what this would be tied to. If we do require a study.
Thank you.
So I'd like to suggest. Kurt did not intend this as a condition. It would be one data point. It's hard to know. I, I don't know that there is a code that you could reference this back to Kurt. So my suggestion is that we set it aside for right now. Any thumbs up on that or thumbs down?
Are we thumbing up on setting it aside or we're thumbing up on it as a condition?
Setting it aside. All right. Oh, so, okay. It was, insofar as thumbs count, it was six, one. Okay. The next, don't lose that though Devon, because I do think we will want to circle back to it in, not in today's conversation, but in some other conversation. Since clearly we're get a lot of student housing requests these days. Thank you.
Excuse me, are we, are we looking at Devon's screen?
Yes, that's Devon's screen.
Okay, since is, is mine the next item that we're?
Yes, yours is the next item and this is not the official language. This was Devon trying to capture the intention.
I, I have official language and I sent it. And so if Devon can pop it from his email.
Okay. And while he does that, Mark, ML has her hand up.
Okay.
So I would like to add a condition as well. And I, I know I didn't talk about that when I
That's okay.
Spoke generally. How do you want? Do you want me to send something to Devon? Do you want me to talk about it first or how do you want me to do that?
Why don't you send something to Devon and while you're doing that, then we can talk through Marks and then we can talk through yours and then we can talk through mine. Does that work for you, ML?
Yeah, I don't mean to jump ahead of yours. I can go left. That's totally fine. I, I just hadn't mentioned it. So I wanted to get on the queue.
There's, there's no, there's no, there's no specific order except what it went on, on Devon's page. So if you send something to Devon and meanwhile we will work through Marks. Okay. So Marks, Devon, can you make that bigger? I'm sorry. My eyesight is not good enough to read teeny tiny. Okay, thank you. Okay. So Marks, Marks language, he gives us an or, an option. Approval is conditional upon the applicant and the city reaching a written agreement laying out each party's responsibility for maintenance of the multi-use path that traverses the property. Either A, the agreement will state that all outdoor spaces south of the north edge of the multi-use path and north of the Southern Creek Bank shall be fully acceptable by the public at all times unless a closure is required and agreed to jointly by the city and the property owners and that such closure should be rare. Or the agreement will also state and memorialize that all outdoor spaces noted in yellow color and as noted as public space on page 135 of 160 of the planning board packet entitled item 3A, part 10 dash 1 shall be fully accessible by the public at all times unless a closure is required and agreed to jointly by the city and the property owners and that such closure should be rare. I think you're saying the same thing. You're just trying to define it.
It's, yeah, I, in, in terms of visiting the site and trying to create a definable boundary and what people would perceive as public space, I think the lawn to the south of the, of the multi-use path and going across the creek, the perception by the public currently and, and in the future is that that's public space. And so all I'm trying to do here, and I can be convinced potentially that this will all be taken care of. And of course, the city would never allow a problem to ensue, but we have a history in open space properties and in the city and in the county of creating what people think are public spaces. And then at some future date, people discover, well, actually it's not, or that there is, is not as restricted as or as publicly accessible as they had once thought. And so I just simply want it clarified that if this applicant is showing us a drawing and saying these spaces are public, but they're not relinquishing, they're not, they're not donating that to the city. They're not giving it to the city. They are, they are saying it's theirs, but it's publicly accessible. And if you look at especially at the, at the, at that page, the one page 135 or 160, there are a number of north-south connections off the multi-use path, multi-use path noted in yellow that someday in the future, for some unknown reason, some future property owner that might own the property might generate a reason to close public access there. And so all I'm asking for is for the applicant and the city to actually formally agree that those shall not be closed to the public in perpetuity unless for life, health, safety, the city and the property owner agree.
So Mark, the only comment I would make to that is it's not uncommon in development processes for someone to, someone to get the entitlement, another developer to build the building and a third developer to actually manage the building. So I think actually instead of using applicant, it, or you, you have to clarify that it would be whoever owns the property at any time. You have to figure out, I think, figure out how to get that in there.
Well, I, I would simply request we change, I, I think that's excellent input Sarah. And change, I, I have property owner, I, I've mixed it up between applicant and, and property owner in there. So I would, I would just eliminate applicant and change wherever it appears as applicant to property owner.
So I see that Laurel has shown her beautiful face. Laurel, what do you want to share with us?
Very good. Yeah. And I don't want to interrupt your discussion of this at all. Just wanted to comment on a couple of things legally speaking. One of those is, so for the easement part where the multi-use path is, that's done by code and access and maintenance are already defined in that easement process. So I just didn't want to like duplicate that here because it's already done in code. Yeah. So just wanted to say that.
I'm happy to eliminate that first paragraph. If there was any question about that, if that's not a question, great then, but the other two still are a question for me.
Yeah. And then the other thing I just wanted to let you know again, just let you know for your discussion is there is a piece in the management plan that talks about this. It's on page 119 of the packet and it describes Boulder Creek Programming and Maintenance Landmark. And it talks about the pickleball courts, et cetera. So I wanted to let you know about that because that is something that will be in part of the development agreement and, and something that they're being healthy. So again, just for awareness.
Okay, 119 of the section.
Since from the management plan.
Part two.
Let me check.
Okay, I'm getting there.
Yep, part two.
Okay, the Boulder Creek Programming and Maintenance.
Yeah. And it just talks a little bit about the maintenance that they're going to do. So again, I'm not saying that this procludes you from your discussion. Just want to let you know that they would be held to this as part of their development agreement.
Okay. So you're saying that 30 years from now, two owners, two, this has changed hands two times, three times, that in a, in, in court, the city would prevail in maintaining public access based on this wording.
It, so what we can do is enforce based on the wording that they agree to in this development agreement, which this is part of it. So we could enforce what it says here, which I don't, I don't know if it necessarily exactly lines up with what you have, but we can enforce what it says about.
So I, I read this and, and I, I looked at this and to me it seemed you know, full of intention, full of aspiration. It didn't read like a, like a, a legal property access document that I would, you would typically get from a title company when, you know, someone has a driveway that goes across your property or whatever. Those are usually very specific and, and much more specific than this. And much more legally enforceable at a future date because.
So this, this does run with the land, but, but like you said, it's, it's a little bit more aspirational language than maybe what you're looking for. But this particular language would run with the land, not who owns the property necessarily.
And, and the other thing, they, they already tipped their hand a little bit. Provide a combination of active and passive recreational opportunities for the community as a whole. Some outdoor areas will be available for community use from dawn to dusk. So, and, and we have, we have had battles in, in city of Boulder, open space and mountain parks about timed access and you know, this is a property and some of the north-south access points, the creek path, some of the area, anyway, to my way of thinking, cannot be subject to the property owner's decision, ad hoc decision to have a nighttime closure. Anyway, so I, I find this interesting and helpful, but inadequate for what my concern is. So anyway.
Absolutely. And again, the easement, right?
Yeah.
Where the, the path itself, like the actual path is on an easement and that is controlled by the city a little bit more. So just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
So can I just, we, let's open it for comment and I'll just go first because I have a question for Mark, which is my recollection, which could be wrong from our, the earlier meeting, is that the developer, the applicant wants to make sure that the safety of residents is, is assured as much as it can be assured and that the privates, so that that private space where the privatization of what we're calling public space is, matters to them. Do you feel that what you're opposing here is adequate to make sure that the residents are? I mean, closing, closing that space from dawn to dusk, there's a reason, from dusk to dawn, excuse me, there's a reason for that, right? So I'm curious if you feel that in any way your, your proposed condition
Right.
undermines that effort.
Yeah. So I'm relying on the applicant's drawing on page 135. And if you look at that, they have two large lobby areas to the south of the buildings that are in yellow. And then a primary north-south corridor between building one and building two, I believe. Yeah, between building one and building two. The, 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 the north-south corridor between building one and two and the two blobs of yellow are, are my primary concern. The rest of the yellow, I think, could be closed. And then they note the areas in brown as as, as private and, and closed to the public and as they should be. And so I don't have any, any problem with that. And then there's some, there's a, a green buffer area that is not shown as yellow. And I, I would consider that to be under their jurisdiction and under their control. And I, and so my point would be that whether it's language or a drawing or a survey that gets referenced, that the, the one primary north-south connection and the two blobs that kind of are, one is north of the creek and one is south of the creek are, are stated to be public, are stated to be fully publicly accessible. And all I want to do is memorialize that, that is fully publicly accessible unless the property owners in the city agree otherwise.
Laurel, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have a question about the dog park and the pickleball court. So Mark, are you suggesting that people should be able to play pickleball at midnight if they want to? And have their dogs in the dog park?
Good, good catch, good catch. I think that could be accepted certainly. Sure. Same with the dog park.
I'm, I'm also not sure that like, I feel like those are uses that could change over time, right? I don't think we need to have a pickleball court in perpetuity necessarily. Pickleball popularity may wane. I don't play it, but it seems very popular now. I guess my, my general comment is I definitely think it's important to keep access routes open, including overnight. Like if people have emergencies and they need to be, you know, riding their bike through there, I think all of that should not be closed at night, but if they want to close, you know, some of these other amenities at night, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. So I don't know how to refine your language to say that the public access pathways are, are open and accessible to the public at all times, but some of the public amenities. Like what does it mean to have these big blobs, these big yellow blobs that are lawn areas accessible to the public at all times? Does that mean people can be picnicking at midnight outside of the student housing? Like I just, I'm not sure why, what's our interest in trying to make sure that that's accessible at all times? The pathways, I can see that.
Um, well, okay. So maybe the, the language, maybe what we simply should say is unless, unless a closure is agreed to jointly by the city and the property owners, leave off the adjective of should be rare and and then let the city and the property owners agree on, on hours of access for dog park, pickleball, et cetera. But you're right. My, my greatest concern is is creek path access and connections. And, and they're, in, in the US, we have a long history of property owners closing what has long been regarded as public access to extract something from a, a, a city of town, an agency, forest service, whatever. And so I, I'm looking forward and, and if the city, if the staff says, hey, we got this or we understand your concern, or we would prefer you word it this way to give us a greater flexibility in, in drafting this. I, I'm, I'm ready to, I'm ready to hear staff's ideas about this and, and address my concerns. Maybe I'm just being nutty about it, but I, I don't think so, but I might be.
Can I make a recommend? So is there, are there other comments on this? Would people be comfortable if Mark spent a few minutes talking through with whoever staff is, he needs to talk through to clear, make this a more clear language? Okay. Mark, if you don't mind working on that, that would be awesome. Devon, can you put up ML's condition? And ML, maybe you can start talking us through it while he's doing that.
Yeah, Sarah, were you suggesting that Mark should talk offline with staff to refine this?
Or just ask staff to send him some line edits that might reflect the narrowing, the clarifications, and then Mark can decide if he's comfortable with it and then bring it back to us. I just, I don't want us to be line editing right collectively. I think that's not a use, good use of our time.
Gotcha. I, I would also be interested in knowing if staff think that this kind of condition helps in some significant way with a problem that we have.
If I can just jump in, just to clarify, we wouldn't have any offline discussions with the board member. But we can work to refine the language and then when we come back with what we think reflects the discussion here, we can also speak to, speak to the essence of it as you mentioned, Laura. Thanks.
That would be great. Thank you very much. And just so you know, George has also has a condition he'd like to add. So, and we'll talk through ML. We'll come back to you, Mark. You have not been forgotten. ML, let's talk through yours and then we'll put up George's.
Sarah, Devon has two ahead of me.
No, these are, these are the things right ahead of you are. I think what is, is this yours condition that the project go to DAB?
Oh, is it there? I don't see it. Yeah. Oh.
Okay, that. Okay. So I'll read the condition as it's currently written and then you can share with us your thoughts. Condition that the project go to DAB for actionable input on building. Condition that the project go to dab for actionable input on building design guidelines. Massing five point one, a breakdown, break, I think, breaking down the massing a bit, is that what you meant?
I'm just, uh, these are the way it is written in the guidelines.
Okay, five point one B, provide pedestrian breaks in long buildings, five point one. C, transition to adjacent buildings. Boulder Valley Comp Plan two point three six, physical design for people, seven dot oh seven, mix of housing types. Site review criteria nine dash two dash fourteen H two site design A. Uh, and Roman numeral four. Open space provides relief to density both within the project. From surrounding development. Uh, do you want to sort of walk us through, I'm not sure if. What, I'm not sure if what you're ref, the code you're referencing here is what you want dab to consider? Or if you, or if you're, I mean, it almost sounds like you're, you have some objections to. Whether the, you, 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 you don't necessarily feel the project as is meets code.
So, um. There are specific. Um. Components of the project that I think need to be addressed in um. Greater, with greater attention, and I think dad would be the appropriate. Um. Agency or the appo- appropriate um entity to provide that input. And I'm stating that they are actionable so that it's not just like, oh, um, yeah, we kind of stepped down the building by a few feet here and there. That, and that would be the people to have the conversation. So I'm referencing three different um standards. One is the, um. I, let me go look at what I actually sent. It doesn't, it looks like it's missing some parts. Uh.
And while you're, while you're looking, Charles has his hand up, so I'm gonna call on Charles.
Yeah, we would ask that if there is a, a recommendation to go back to dab that we have very surgical and very specific.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to, yeah.
And, and while these um policies are helpful and would probably be more appropriate for a concept level. Um, you know, the design is pretty well developed at this point, so we would want very specific direction from dab. Um, for elements of the buildings or the site plan for them to uh review and provide comments on.
Um, okay, so that's why I put in the language actionable. Um, so. The building design guidelines are from the BDRC. Uh, guidelines. And one of them is massing five point one A, and that is just. Um, as it states, it encourages. Requires that the massing gets broken down. Um, I don't think this building, I mean, we've all said it, we've all seen it, the building does not break down its massing. Five point one B, um. Provide pedestrian breaks in long buildings. We've seen these, one of these buildings two hundred and eighty feet long. Um, the pathways, the public pathways are what, maybe twenty-five feet wide? Um, there's no brakes, so you're just going down this big long, so that's pretty specific, provide pedestrian breaks in long buildings. Five point one C, transition to adjacent buildings. The buildings that, that uh abut this property. Range from what nineteen feet to twenty-eight feet tall, nineteen feet to twenty-four feet tall. So they're not very tall. The buildings that are directly adjacent to. This proposed fifty-three foot tall building. Um, so that is something that should be looked at. The other reference is the Boulder Valley Complan, physical design for people, and I think this is what you're wanting to weigh in, Charles. Uh, physical design for people, what does that mean? Um. You know, they talk about having, uh, well, okay, so that might be. A little fuzzy. Seven point oh seven mix of housing types. There's one housing type here. It's student housing. Period. Um, so. I think some of these are, are desire to have housing in this um. Adjacent to commercial, adjacent to, to, to create. Uh, the fifteen-minute neighborhoods to create livability in our city. I think it's talking about them, the working. Middle income, housing, people that are going to be there all year round. Student housing goes empty during the summer. It goes empty during holidays. It's an interesting, um. It's got an interesting use impact on the adjacent, adjacent, um. Context that I think is not being taken into account. That is what this Boulder Valley Regional Center is wanting to do is to integrate and create. We want housing as part of our commercial. We want to create vibrancy in our, in our regional center. And we want to create dense housing and more housing. I, I would look at, well, is student housing. Giving us. The mix that we really should be um considering. In these centers and driven by the Golden Valley Complan.
And I, I apologize for interrupting you. I, I.
Oh, hi, Charles.
How do, how do we get, how do we get like really specific as to what you're looking for? So we've got something actionable to. Cut this up or down, because I'm, I'm struggling with it a little bit.
Yeah.
And I, and I would add that Hella would remind us, and I'm sure Laurel is itching to remind us as well. In order for us to put a condition on the project, we have to say that it does not meet a certain part of the site review criteria. We cannot, we cannot reference the BBC, the Boulder Valley Regional Center and just say, well, we don't think that we want student housing here. We can't reference the BVCP in general unless we are willing to say that it does not on balance meet the BVCP. Like it has to be tied to what of the site review criteria does it not meet? And this condition would help it meet that part of the site review criteria. It has to be really specific to be legally defensible.
If I can, if I can add something, ML, um. And I'm not just plumping for my, uh, some version of my condition.
No worries.
It's the, the massive scale of this building that makes it impossible. To meet some of these design guidelines. And if we were to approve a condition. In this case, related to the parking uh reduction. Uh, it would allow the applicant to go back a bit to the drawing table. And reduce the mass and scale of the building and take and hopefully also. In uh, address some of these uh design issues. But not just that you, not just that the building becomes a bit smaller, but that they have more, they've given themselves a bit more, or they are given more space. To do some of these things because they no longer are maximizing the build out. To every square inch on which they can build. Like I, I feel like that is a tool. Potential to.
I, I recognize that, yeah. When you put it out there, I recognize that that would be one way to begin. What I'm really suggesting here is to give dab a. When dab explained to us how they had kind of looked at the building and what they had referenced. Um, what I'm suggesting is take these specific things into consideration. In a dab review. And I, I would. Leave it up to dab. To determine how they can be actionable. Now, I'm hearing perhaps from Brad and Charles and maybe Legal that. We can't have a condition be let dab exercise some authority on the building. Um, or at least provide some point, pointed direction. Because I, I think that, um, as I understood dab speaking about their review. Um, they weren't looking at sort of the same kinds of things that. You know, we're looking at, they're, they were looking at it a little bit differently, and I think that these are the big ticket items. You know, that they, that there's something challenging about the massing. And it does that relative to, you know. The pedestrian is going to walk through there and what's their relationship? The person living on the third story going to stare across twenty-five feet at another, you know, window of a person. Uh, that they're, all of these very specific things that. Are directly referenced. If somebody reads this design. Factors. Could result in actionable items, and I, I don't think it's up to us to say, do this, do that, do the other. I, I would like to have them go to dab to get input on some specific kinds of things and massing being. A, a big one.
So ML, I'm gonna call on Brad who has his hand up, who might have some, some in, some thoughts about this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just want to talk about process a little bit. So uh, any condition would need to be actionable to conclusion and. Unless it is the board's desire to defer all authority to. Tab in this, or uh dab in this case, which I don't think is your intent, probably not advisable anyway. Uh, the, the, the clear condition would be something to the effect of, you know, move approval with the condition that. The massing be redesigned. For example, or and or the pedestrian breaks be uh shortened. Comma, you know. With referral uh and recommendations from dab. Prior to reconsideration by. For example. Just want to clarify.
I actually think that the, the formula, the parking reduction formula is a tool to addressing these design issues because it. Push, it, it requires the applicant to. Uh, it gives the opportunity, the applicant an opportunity to, to redesign a bit and create some of these uh. It makes some of these changes, but that's my.
Are you suggesting that the um condition? Be interconnected?
I think we.
The parking and um the resulting massing?
Yeah, I don't want to jump off into mine, uh, ju, but just to, because I, we've got uh comments on yours and. Uh, uh, George has a condition as well, but the way I was imagining the way mine would work is. Whatever the math, the math, either it's. The building has to have a thirty percent parking reduction or thirty-five or a forty percent parking reduction. Which then will lead the develop, the applicant to have to redesign the building to meet that reduction. And that creates the opportunity then for some of these. Issues to be incorporated into their redesign. So I'll leave it at that because we're not actually talking about my proposal yet.
Yeah.
Um, but I think it opens up, it potentially. If four or more people are comfortable with it, it opens up a possibility for, because what I don't hear, I will say just as a. I'm not hearing great love for what has been proposed as is, like, I'm not hearing that. So, um, so maybe Laura likes it, but everyone else is like, yeah, I'm not so sure.
Can, can I just?
One, one, one last.
I, I just want, I just want, I'm, I, I, I'm closing, I'm, I'm not going to talk about this anymore. I just wanted to. Connect my, what, what ML is saying to what I'm trying to say now, Laura and then Mark and.
Wait, I think Brad is trying to speak.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll jump off. I just want to make one more process point. Um, as you finalize your discussion around these conditions. Uh, it would be helpful to us if, as staff, if we could take a ten-minute break to. Craft and, and capture those so that we can come back and then see if that reflects your discussion. Um, because we're, we're taking copious notes here. Thanks.
All right, so Laura, thank, thank you, ML, and we're not, we're not moving away from it yet. I'm just, Laura and Mark both have their hands up.
Thank you. So I want to say that ML, I really appreciate your attention to which policies you think this project could better meet. And I really wish that we had had this level of input at the concept review stage before it went to dab so that dab knew. Exactly which things, planning board felt that this building did not meet and dab could have given that advice and then it would have come back at site review, hopefully with some of these things responded to.
We weren't on planning board then.
We were not, and gosh, what an impoverished uh, uh, process. Clearly, we are the only ones who could have saved this, but um, you know, I, I, I do think there's good.
That we gave all that feedback.
Okay, well, I, I, I appreciate what ML has done here and I think this is a good roadmap for the future. But we're not at concept review, we're at site review, and I think that ML, what you're proposing. Goes beyond what at least I would be comfortable approving as a condition because my understanding. Of a condition is that once we put conditions on the process, the project, and then we vote yes on the project with the conditions. We never see it again. It doesn't come back to us. So unless we're gonna deny the project and then make a recommendation. Hey, go to dab and come back to us with a new site review application after you have done these things. That's different. So I don't think this is a condition on approval. I don't think that that's the process that we want. I don't think that that's. Legally defensible either, that, that we put this kind of condition on it and say we're gonna approve the building. And here's your condition, go forth and meet it. Um, and I.
So the condition is to, is to go to dab again.
Yeah, but then it will never come back to us.
And that's okay. I, I mean, let dab do its job.
Uh, I, I, to me, I don't feel like that's the authority that, you know, it's our job.
Rather than debating this too much longer, should we, if that's ML's thought, should we thumbs up or thumbs down, keep moving?
That, I, I give, I'm giving a thumbs up to that. That was my point is let's save staff some time. Let's save us some time and go ahead and do a straw poll on ML's. And if we want to do it on mine, uh, we can do that too. Um, and so at the, at the risk of uh. Messing up mine, I would, I would do a straw poll.
Okay, uh, Lisa, is that what you wanted to say as well, or did you, you haven't said anything all night?
Yeah, yeah, so I'll, I'll speak up before we do the straw poll. Can everyone hear me first of all?
Yes.
Okay, um. I, I think you make a really good point, Laura, and, and I just want to say, and Sarah was kind of interjecting this as well, that we actually did give all this feedback at site review. And then this is what got kicked back to us. Like, we told them all of this and this is apparently what we got. Sorry, I'm a little tired. Um. I, I'm not sure it's necessary, so I'm not necessarily saying that I would do it, but I'm not necessarily opposed to kicking this whole project back and saying, please do something better. Because I, I am not thrilled with it. And if we have the votes to do that, I would almost rather do that than have this meeting extend way far into the night. I'm not sure we do. I'm open, also open to maybe do some conditions if we don't have enough votes to kick this thing back. But I'm, I'm not thrilled with it writ large. And I think ML's points are great. I think everyone else's points are great, and I wish that this were overall a better project. Uh, in some ways, I would rather just say, hey, please take all the feedback we already gave you the first time and we're now giving you the second time and just. Go redo this thing again, sorry, but you didn't get it right. Rather than trying to condition the heck out of it. Trying to fix it. Um, so hon- honestly, I, I'm, I am actually fine with denying this. I don't know that we have the votes, and if we don't have the votes, then we'll move on, but.
Let's actually, I'm, I'm, I'm nodding my head. I think ML was nodding her head. Is that a fair comment? ML, were you nodding your head in agreement with Lisa?
I'm nodding my head in, in acknowledgement that these comments have already been made.
Right, okay.
And this is what we got, so I don't know what the next step is and hearing what everybody's saying, yeah.
The next step that Lisa is proposing is. Send it back because it. And I'm not saying that that will get four or five or six or seven votes, but that is what Lisa is saying. So the question is. Um, I'm happy to do a straw poll right now about whether, I'm sorry, Laurel, what?
Apologies. Just to clarify, does that mean you are denying the application and asking for a recent bill? I just wanted to clarify that versus um just like kicking it back.
Okay, right now, just doing a straw poll. About whether or not there are four people of the seven. Who are not going to approve this project as is. So, so I'm one.
Well, I, I would really like for us to have some discussion of that. That's a big decision to make to say we're gonna deny this application.
Laura, it's just a straw poll.
Okay, but.
Well, and then we can have discussion. Because if it's not four people, then that's not gonna, it's not gonna happen. We, there's nothing to discuss because it's not gonna happen. So. Um, so the straw poll is. That as is, this project uh isn't, you don't approve this project as is. So I'm one. George is one. Lisa is one. And ML is one.
I think that that is a very serious decision to make and I would really like to have discussion on it before we vote on that formally.
Okay, let's have, fine, let's have discussion. Uh, Mark first and then Laura and then Kurt.
So. A motion.
We have not made a motion yet. It was a struggle.
Let me, let me speak. Thank you. Um, my learning experience was the raising canes denial. And uh, and if we remember that denial, we continued the meeting so that staff could take the very, very specific items that we referred to, both from the code and the BBCP and draft a, a very complete denial motion. So what we're, what we're, we're not talking about, oh, let's kick it back. Let's go to dab again. We don't have a process for that. We have a process for approval, approval with conditions or denial. And so I, I am questioning if the folks of the four, are you prepared to have staff draft a denial motion? And if so, are you prepared with the sections of the code and the BBCP that would warrant a denial? If you're not prepared, then, then maybe we need to continue it again. But that is what's required. And I think that that is the experience we need to learn from was the raising canes denial.
So um, I will respond to that with yes, the parking, parking reduction does not meet code. That is my argument for this. And that's why I've been trying to come up with an alternative that would not deny it, but also not allow a huge parking reduction. So I'm gonna call on George and then Laura and then Kurt.
Yeah, uh, well, I'm trying to think of, of where to fit this in. So I, I really kind of want to keep things moving forward. Uh, similarly to your parking reduction comment, I have a very specific item which kind of dovetails into um, what ML was putting up, which was the facade on, on twenty eighth street. Um, and I, I think I had put the, I had sent a little bit of language to Devin. I don't see it here.
Devin, can you put up whatever language George sent?
It was not necessarily official language, but it, uh, this, this would help me kind of articulate it. Yeah, so, so this is addressing one of, um, but probably not enough of what ML's concern was, which was the facade facing twenty eighth street shall feature greater articulation, height, mass, breakup, the facade of the expansive parapet, which we heard directly from dab and which we had feedback from on the initial concept review too that we got. And it doesn't appear to the developer is listening to anybody relative to this. And this is the entry and exit out of Boulder. And it is immensely frustrating that we're here this far into this process and the developer still has not taken this concern. In, because I think it's a massive concern and I think everyone on this board has voiced it in one way or another. Um, people may or may not feel as passionately about it, but I don't think there's a single person on this board that hasn't brought this up. Um, and I don't know why the developer hasn't, um, hasn't addressed this, uh, to appease the board and dab. Um, but it's frustrating because we're in this position now, uh, getting to a place where we're thumbs upping and downing sort of, uh, uh, moving the project forward. And I would rather to, to your point, Sarah, I'd rather come up with some kind of formula and some direct guidance like this that would allow them to move forward in this process. And so that's, that's what I was trying to achieve in this. I don't know that I, 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 I want to be cautious about sending this back to dab to, um, and, um, and removing our authority as a board, because we also have the authority to weigh in on these things, even prior to dab even existing. So um, I put that out there because I'd like to get to specific things like this or to your parking proposal to get us to a place where we can bring some conditions that we can move something forward. But I also want to acknowledge um, what, what other board members have said, uh, especially ones that, that have been here for a longer period of time. That a lot of this feedback was given and this is what we got. And now we're in this position and it's really not incumbent upon this board to give feedback over and over and over again. Um, and then get something that we're, we're not being listened to. Uh, and then just expected to try to push something forward on behalf of the developer. Um, and, and it seems like dab had a similar experience, especially when it comes to this facade fronting twenty eighth street. So putting that out there for discussion, uh, and trying to move us forward in, in some direction. Thanks.
Uh, George, uh, Laura, Mark, and then Lisa.
So, um, related to the discussion of whether to just deny the project entirely, I would be extremely reluctant to do that. You know, the city of Boulder has a well-deserved reputation for being extremely difficult to develop in. And our processes are long, they are expensive. And we have very specific criteria that the developer is required to meet and they can make a legal argument about how and why they have met them. So if we are going to deny a project, we have got to make sure we have a rock solid legal argument of how they have not met those criteria. And so I would be interested to see, um, for the conditions that are being proposed or for the denial that is being proposed, what code sections specifically are we saying that we don't think it meets? Cause I think we need that to be able to vote on it. So George, I think, you know, you are right that we have all expressed that we think this project's design could be better. If we were going to deny the project based on the idea that the facade facing twenty eighth street uh, doesn't have a good enough articulation and height and massing, where is that in the code that they are required?
They're asking for height modification, Laura. There, there is, there is a code specifically around that.
Okay, so let's look at the, the height modification section and talk about how it does not meet the requirements. And, and maybe your argument is around compatibility with the neighborhood. Um, I, I'm not sure exactly what the argument is, but I think we need to make it and articulate it so that the whole board can consider it. Um, and maybe it's sort of unstated here, but I think, I think we need to be really explicit and verbalize it because staff are gonna need that.
Right. I think we're gonna rely on staff to actually craft it is, is that, I think that will be our process.
I think they can.
That route and that it's not gonna be us that are gonna wordsmith it down to exactly, we're gonna give the, the specifics as articulated as we can and, and then they will.
They will definitely help us with the wording, that's for sure. But I think we have to be the ones to point to the code sections that in our judgment as the planning board, it doesn't meet. And why we think that this condition would help it meet it if we do the conditioning route.
Mark, then Lisa, then Laurel. Sorry about that.
I, I, I concur with Laura and I, again, uh, George said, I want to move forward. But with what? Going back to dab, it, it's, our choices are super clear, approval. Approval with conditions as, as Charles said, that are actionable in detail, in the extreme and or denial. So we, there is not, there is not a process to go back to dab that they would go back, they might go back to dab if you kill this project. And they go through the entire site review process again, which if that's what we're gonna do and you have the code to support you, right, let's, let's bring that forward and, and make the vote. But I just want to be super clear. We do not have some in-between process that says, I don't aesthetically like this east wall and we're gonna send it back for, uh, some improvements to the east side of the property.
They don't need the parking requirement.
You haven't brought forth your proposal yet, so we'll wait, I'm anxious to see your proposal.
Okay, Lisa, you're next and then Laurel.
Uh, yeah, I, th- this is, it's just so interesting because I, I don't. I think it's completely appropriate to tell a developer, this does not mean, I mean, the fact that we have this many proposed conditions and that we're in a second meeting that has now gone three hours long and we still cannot reach any meaningful, I mean, I understand it could be a four, three split on denial, but this says to me that this project is not ready. This project is not meeting requirements. Uh, everyone's got a different condition that they're bringing forward, trying to fix it. And then we're all arguing with each other over like whether that's the right condition or exactly how to wordsmith it. Uh, uh, this is what happens when we provide very clear feedback and we raise a lot of concerns. And, and this is a very experienced developer in Boulder who addressed a lot of it and has a very constrained site. And is trying to also make this make sense financially. I appreciate that. It's not there yet. And, and I, and I just don't think there's anything wrong with denying something and saying, hey, we said this to you, then we said it to you again. Now we're saying it one final time. It's three hours and this is where we're at. This is the only thing we've had on our table tonight. I, I, I think that alone should be a sign that something isn't right. And, you know, I, I, I just want to push back against the notion that denying necessarily means that we're not gonna prove something or that we don't want to approve something. I don't think we would have talked about it for three hours again, if we weren't trying to make it work. We're not finding a way to make it work. And I think that's a sign that this project just isn't ready. Um, and as for the particulars, I think you're absolutely correct. This is the kind of thing the city can and does get sued over. I will rely on staff to ensure that we do this correctly. Um, but, but I just want to point out that I think the truth is in the process. And, and that's why we're where we're at now. And it, it feels kind of like an impasse in a yucky place. And I don't see this as meaning that I, I, I am excited to someday vote yes on a version of this project. I'm not there tonight.
Uh, Laurel.
Um, yes, I just wanted to speak to process. So if other board members want to talk before then, um, I can speak after.
Uh, why don't you go ahead and speak now?
Okay, that sounds good. Um, I just wanted to suggest that if you are going to move forward with this, that, um, we do need a continuance to draft those findings so that it can come back before the board, um, and review it. So I just wanted to say that that might be the best path moving forward as far as drafting the actual document of um, findings, if you guys move forward with the denial. Um, that's kind of what we've done in the past. I think it's what we did with um, the raising canes mentioned, that somebody mentioned a few months ago. So, um, that's just a suggestion as far as making sure that it's as legally sound as we can make it.
Okay, thank you for that, Laurel. That's very helpful. And I would just like to remind folks that our job is not to always say yes. Our job, right? I mean, I realize that there's some discomfort for folks. Uh, when we are, we can't find agreement on a project or when the project is not ready for prime time. I, you know, so, and I realize that that's an uncomfortable position, but it is part of our work to sometimes saying, say it's not ready. So I'll leave it at that for right now, Laura and then Mark.
So, um, I am not of the perspective that this project is not ready. I am ready to vote to approve this project and I am ready to consider reasonable conditions that other board members might want to put on it. I think that, um, this project would provide, you know, all of the things that we have talked about. It does provide valuable student housing. It's in a prime location for that. It does take a building out of the floodplain that is currently in the floodplain and, and vulnerable. It does, uh, improve our open space. It does all of the things that, that Danica and her team worked so hard to convince us of what are the benefits of this project. It would provide millions of dollars for affordable housing. There's a lot to recommend this project. And I do not see a strong legal reason of how it does not meet the criteria. I know other board members may differ. I will not be voting to deny this project. So I just want to make that clear that even though I might not be thrilled with the design and think it is the most beautiful architecture I have ever seen. To me, it meets the criteria. I would vote to approve and I would vote to, um, I would be happy to consider reasonable conditions. Like I think George's condition could be, could be added, um, and that that would not kill the project. So I'm not sure that we have four people here tonight who would like to vote to deny this project. And I'm hoping that we have some discussion about that.
Mark.
I prior, in, in, before our uh, June meeting, the first meeting on this subject, I reviewed the planning board minutes from the November fourth, twenty twenty one. I have subsequently reviewed them again, searching for references that, uh, say, gee, um, I hate that east facade. There should be more articulation on the north. It's not there. And I just sent the minutes to everyone. And I'm happy to have anyone disabuse me of my reading, but this, this, I think it's a, it's a, a bit of a, um, a, all of our memories. We struggle at times. Um, and this also speaks to the importance of minutes. So either the minutes are inaccurate and there was a lot of feedback that didn't get reported. Or the minutes reflect something that, um, is not fairly being spoken to tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Lisa.
I think before I would have anything meaningful to add to that, I'd need to literally go listen to the recording of the meeting. But I, I think, Mark, you'd be the first person to say that sometimes minutes are not completely comprehensive and don't capture everything that we say. So thank you for bringing that point up at the end.
Thank you, Lisa. So, uh, I'm gonna take another straw poll. Now, you know what I want to do? So I believe that the condition that I have put out here, which has a very wide range for parking reduction issues, um, could be a way forward. It would require the developer, the applicant, excuse me, to kind of go back to the drawing board. Uh, because they'd have to meet, uh, uh, they have to come much closer within spitting distance of the actual parking reduction um, allowances of the code. Um, but it would also give them an opportunity to address these design issues that people have raised. Now, I realize that there's at least one person who it would vote for the project as is, no problem. But I'm curious if there are other folks who would be comfortable with a condition like the one I've proposed that opens up the opportunity for a redesign and is based in a code, uh, uh, code variance that is massive. Um, and creates the opportunity for, um, them to come back to planning board with a, a building that has, that is better designed, more human scaled um, and closer to the parking reduction allowances. So, Laura, before you say anything, I just want to do a straw poll.
Just, it's just a process thing, Sarah. I, I think if you're asking them to come back to planning board with another design, that is a denial. We don't have a process to improve it with the condition that they have to come back. If we approve it with this condition, then we would just say, go forth and do this and whatever design you come up with is approved. Done. We never see it again.
With this, they'd be working with staff. And, uh, I trust staff to have heard everything we have said today and to hear everything that dab said. Okay, I mean, I, I'm, I don't. We have, we basically have two points of view right here. One is either to deny as is, end the story or to create a path forward. I believe that my, some version of my condition creates a path forward that is based in, uh, code and also creates the opportunity for addressing almost all the other issues that have been raised by members of the board. Now, to me, those are the two paths that are in front of us. If there is a third path, someone should bring it up. But I, to me, those are the two paths. That's what I'm hearing. Mark and then Laura.
I just want to be clear that you're, I, I appreciate trusting in staff. I trust in staff also. However, I would point out that the truck, the staff brought forth the concept review and the recommended motion language there. It's, the planning board voted seven oh, um, uh, to move this project forward in November of twenty one.
We don't vote on concept plan.
Well, it, it, it was, um, okay, I'm sorry. I, I, I was looking at a different part of that. Excuse me. I, I just want to reiterate that it is staff's recommendation that we approve this project tonight. So and they have, they have not addressed your concerns. So the idea that you create a condition that would markedly or radically change the design and that it would be up to staff to ha- meet that condition and go forward and we never see it again. That's, to me, that's not a, that, that, that doesn't achieve your ends and your trust in staff to accommodate your design, uh, preferences might be misplaced.
So I don't want to put words in staff's mouth, but Brad just told us they are taking copious notes. They are very clear what our design issues are. They've heard it from us. They heard it at dab. The, the, the tool that exists for us to empower staff to work with this developer who has thus far not respond, been responsive necessarily to to most of the commentary on mass scale, density, intensity and design and parking is to require a different formula for their three hundred and forty eight parking spaces, which is all they can fit onto that parcel because of the flood zone. And back into a building that is appropriate for three hundred and forty eight parking spaces. I I personally wouldn't want a building to be designed for the parking. But that is, they are asking for a reduction that is so outside the scope of our code. Like, I cannot, I cannot, I can't vote for that. I could vote for a building that is smaller, has more of these design features that people are concerned about, that I'm concerned about. It's still not going to be a thirty, it probably won't be a thirty percent parking reduction. It'll probably be a thirty five percent parking reduction. Still problems, but we will get a better design, we will get a better design building because staff has been listening to us. They've been listening to DAB. And now we have given them a tool. We've given the staff a tool to push the developer to actually respond to our concerns. That's my take on this. You don't have to agree with me. You can vote. We can, uh, but that is my argument for this. So Kurt and then Laura.
Uh, yeah, just to respond quickly to that, um, the planning board has the purview to approve any parking reduction, right? So any parking reduction going through site review is within the scope of the code. So I just want to clarify about that. And secondly, we have seen multiple other student oriented developments that have similar parking levels of parking reduction. And so this is not out of the ordinary in that sense. Thank you.
Kurt, I believe we've seen one, and that was a ninety six unit building. This is a three hundred and three unit building with nine hundred and forty four.
I understand the difference in size. I'm aware of that. The, the other one had a fifty five percent parking reduction. There was also a very significant parking reduction that I think was close to sixty percent for a, uh, project that was on Broadway. It was right across from CU, and I think that that was a close to a sixty percent parking reduction.
That's the hotel I think you're thinking about. That's the only one that had such a huge reduction, and that's going to be a mess up there too. But anyways, um, we're going to take a straw. I'm sorry, we, we have gone over this ground. We're going to take a straw.
Sarah, I have things to say that I have not said.
Okay, you say what you haven't said before.
Okay. So with parking, as you know, I'm not concerned about that. And one of the reasons why I'm not concerned is because of the physical geography of this site. It's bounded on three sides by, there's a creek on one side, and there are major thoroughfares on other sides. And there's no on-street parking that is convenient and free anywhere near this building. Students would be very inconvenienced to leave their car someplace else for weeks or months at a time and then come back to it, right? So I'm not concerned about the parking, and I think I agree with Kurt that we can approve whatever parking reduction we want. I also want to talk about the height for a second, and I want to make sure, can we pull up a diagram of what surrounds this building? We have not yet talked about this, the compatibility with the surroundings, which is actually the criterion in the site review. Maybe this won't be convincing to anyone. Can we get like a map, like the aerial view map that shows what's north, south, east and west? I think there's on the first packet. Here we go. This is a good diagram or a good, uh, rendering. So to, what is there on left of the screen, which I think is the south side? These are four-story student housing buildings and a nine-story, uh, senior residential facility. Nine, I counted nine stories when I walked by there. Um, and then there's CU off in the distance, which also doesn't conform to our height restrictions. That's the south side of the creek. Nothing there is under four stories. Um, on the east side, which you can't see here, is, uh, Twenty-Eighth Street, which is a six-lane divided highway plus a frontage road. And then on the other side of that is a commercial area. You got dentist's office, you got doctor's office, you've got insurance and law offices. It's not residential. On the north side of this, you've got a, um, shopping center with a grocery store and a whole bunch of parking that is part of the Boulder Valley Regional Center. So I'm not worried about those people and blocking their views. They're just looking at their shopping center. And then on the, um, west side here, you do have a two-story residential building that I'm not sure everybody knows that has already been approved for demolition, and that developer certainly is not going to come back with a two-story building. So the surroundings around here, I think, are perfectly compatible with the height exemption that the developer is asking for. This is where we want intensity. And there's, there really is nobody here that is in, I mean, it's not like it's single-family residential and two stories tall anywhere near this building, right? So I'm not bothered by the height in whatsoever. There's also a wealth of mature trees already on the site. The developer's going to plant more. There are trees along Twenty-Eighth Street in the median and along that frontage road that block the view from the east. Like, it's just, it's not, uh, there's nothing about this building, and it's already a sixty-foot building, right? Like, we're not changing the condition. We're not raising the height. I understand that it's a larger building. There's more of the site that is covered. But the height is not being raised here, so I have no problem whatsoever with the height. That said, I do want to talk about Sarah's condition in particular. Sarah, you proposed, rather than a, what is it, a fifty-two percent parking reduction going down to thirty to forty? If we go on the high end of that, if we go to a forty percent parking reduction, has anybody done the math of how many units we would be slicing from this project? Are we talking about slicing a hundred units?
Sarah, you're muted. If you're saying something.
Laura, it's not our job to do the negotiating. It's our job to make a decision on the proposal that is in front. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, because we've.
I I I'm asking, what is the impact of the condition that you're imposing?
What all the arguments are. We know what they all are. So.
We haven't, we don't know how many units we're losing. We don't know how much inclusionary housing we're losing. Why is that not relevant?
That's not a condition of approval, Laura.
You are saying directly, Sarah, that we would reduce the parking and then reduce the number of units or the scale enassing.
I'm not actually reducing the parking. I am letting them stick with the amount of parking. The, they are maxed out on the parking that they can have on that.
Pardon me, you're reducing the allowable parking reduction and tying that to a reduction in the building itself. So to allow for that level of parking at a thirty to forty percent level.
Correct.
Menders, yes. And so that would slice units out of the building to, in order to meet that requirement. So I'm trying to understand what is the impact of we, if we make that, this, um, condition?
I don't think it particularly matters what the impact is. I think we could put in a component of this that says something to the effect of if, if this is reduced to somehow below the thirty-five percent by right, like, which I don't think it would be. We allow the thirty, thirty-five percent by right, or we allow it to be forty-five feet or some, but it's up to the I'm tr- I'm trying to come up with a formula. Uh, yeah, here, here's my take on this, Laura. You want this building as is. You're fine with it as is. I think that is the attitude of at least four people on this board at this moment in time.
That may be, Sarah, but it's but I, I would like to say one more thing before you cut me off, Sarah. And that is, I suspect that whatever reduction in enassing and units will simply come out of the fourth floor. It's probably not going to change the building footprint. That's what the applicant is most likely, in my opinion, to come back with. And so, like I said, I don't think that that reduction in height is going to matter all that much to anybody around here. And what it will do is slice into our inclusionary housing benefit that we get. So.
Which is not a criteria for our decision.
So I just want to say for my fellow planning board members to consider, is it, is taking the height down a little bit worth it to you to lose that inclusionary housing benefit, which will be the impact of this decision? Which I think would be a poor decision, but I understand why some people are arguing for it. Thank you for letting me make my argument.
All right, so Li- Lisa, you're next, and inclusionary housing is not part of our decision-making. Lisa, please go ahead.
I already said the thing where I, again, I I think when we get this crossways with each other and we're arguing about twenty different things, it is a sign, and it's fine. We can have a four-three vote. I would really prefer that we just moved to those four-three votes earlier. And council can see that we are split down the middle. If I lose, fine. I, I, I think, one, I'd like to see, as someone who, if I am still on planning board, maybe in Sarah's position next year, I'd like more recognition of the fact that this was an unscheduled meeting during break that we all took time for and that Sarah is trying to run an efficient meeting. We are all starting to repeat points. That doesn't mean they're bad points. It doesn't mean that you shouldn't have time to speak. But please think about how much of the time we each are taking up compared to how much other people are talking. And that when we have a split vote, however that ends up falling out, it's hard, it's emotional. You feel like, oh, if only I could convince people of my opinion, they would agree with me because these are smart people who I often do agree with. And when we get into positions like this, which we will other nights as well, whoever is running the meeting, let's make an effort to defer to them when they are trying to get us to an efficient meeting and trying to get us to a point of getting to a vote before ten, ten-thirty at night. I don't think that means you're being shut down. I don't think it means you're not being heard, and that doesn't target to anyone in particular. I have felt that way frequently in the past. I think it means we're trying to get to a point where we wrap up the meeting for staff as well, who did not expect to have to be here on this evening and for the applicant.
All right, Mark, if you have something additional to say that has not been said, please say it.
Yes. I would request that my fellow planning board members think very hard before they trade housing for car storage. And that is exactly what is being proposed, is a reduction in housing for people in the name of more, better car storage. So that, so I'm not going to vote for that, and I would ask that you think about your vote in those terms.
George, and then, and George, you're the last one, and then we're going to figure out what we're voting on.
Yeah, understood. I, I, I just have to mention that, I, that, that's as it relates to that, I, I don't, I, I think that's mischaracterized, that maybe the way you want to characterize it, Mark. I see as a complete opposite. It's, it's voting around the massing and scale on this building. Um, the, the, the parking is finite. Uh, so it's, the parking is going to exist one way or the other. It's really the massing and the scale of the building that I'm voting on at least. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, so again, I'm going to come back to where we were five minutes ago, which is we can either vote on the motion or we can vote on, or we can vote on a condition to the motion that creates the opportunity for the applicant and staff to, to come back to, uh, re to revise the design taking into account all of the concerns that have been raised at DAB and here. So I'm going to do a straw poll. Who would like to vote just on the, uh, suggested motion language? Wait, wait, uh, ML, what do you want to say? Uh, ML, you're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. Um, I don't think I understood what you just said. Are you saying that, um, we vote on the motion as it stands, vote on the motion with a condition, conditions? But if we vote on a motion with conditions, it doesn't come back to us, correct?
Uh, that, I believe that is correct. Is that correct, Laurel?
And I believe that staff have asked us not to vote to deny until they can craft a motion for us that would be a denial. So we, we would be straw polling on a denial.
Right, so, so can we accept the motion, condition the motion or deny the motion?
Can we let Laurel answer the question since she's the attorney?
Oh, just one, just one additional question since you asked for clarity there. Um, you can move to see it again within sixty days and see it. Um, the project redesigned. I know you had said it could go to staff. That's one option. It could go to DAB and then staff approval. You could also have a comeback before you. If you are going to do that, I'd recommend hearing from the applicant if that's something they would be interested in.
Is that, um?
If, if I can get clarification to there, I, I'm actually perceiving two different things that are being, and maybe I'm not following it. It is getting a bit late. Sarah, uh, just for staff's clarification, were you doing a straw poll on uh, approval with the condition that the various items that staff or that have been discussed tonight be resolved at the staff level for approval? Was that your proposal?
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out which of the two paths we're going to go down, which is either vote for approval as is because we haven't even voted, we have not voted on any of these conditions. Or, uh, are we uncomfortable with a vote on a condition, on the, uh, motion with the condition of, uh, the, the back, the backwards map, whatever it's thirty or thirty-five or forty percent, which then sends it back to, uh, to a process by which the, the applicants and staff would work to redesign, and then they could incorporate all these comments that we made in twenty-one and are making again now and that, um, uh, DAB made, because that, remember, DAB was not looking at code, planning code. They were looking at design code. So, um, that's, that's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give us a, a set of options.
Right.
We could either vote specifically on the, the, the motion that the staff suggested or a motion that allows this project to move forward but requires changes. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay, in, in the general, if it does go that way, we would need to have a conversation about the precise direction on those changes. So we'll, we'll, we'll circle back if it goes that direction. Thanks.
Okay, and let me ask, let me just ask one more question. I think it's of either Laurel or Brad. If we were to vote first on the suggested motion language and it gets voted down, it is denied. We don't get a chance to vote on a second motion language with a condition that would allow it to move forward, but with changes. Is that correct?
You, you, you can make a million motions and votes. Uh, you can even vote on the same thing multiple times before the meeting concludes.
Okay, yeah. I did want to clarify too with what Laura said. We can move to deny the application. We'll just have I move to deny on the application and direct the city attorney and planning board to craft findings. So there's, there's a way you can do it if you move to the denial, just so you know.
Okay, uh, ML and then Lisa, please.
Um, Brad, um, come back. So Brad, you said something, um, that was very intriguing in that it sounded like you said that we could and I don't remember if the path was, uh, uh, some kind of a motion or, or what, but that staff could take into account all of the concerns that have been put on the table tonight and craft. What did you say?
Oh, well, I, I didn't, I didn't elaborate on the second one, so I'll do so now. My understanding, uh, Sarah, is that you're positioning two different, uh, straw votes. One, uh, approval on the proposal as brought forward. Second, uh, approval on the proposal with a variety of conditions to be satisfied by staff. What I was going to elaborate on is that is probably, that, not probably, that's not enough direction for us to ever resolve that matter. So we would need to have it be more, uh, precise than that. Uh, that, that leaves too much interpretation for us, uh, even though we are taking copious notes to distill all of that into, um, uh, a complete, uh, realization of, of what that condition might be.
So, um, I'm hearing that be, that the condition could be more inclusive than the parking.
If it was just the parking and that was the condition, uh, as, as long as that was stated clearly, I, I understood that the straw poll suggestion was to incorporate all of these various different elements that have been talked about, including design and such.
So we could conceivably have, let me just, let me just put out something as an idea. We could conceivably, uh, vote on a motion of approval with the condition of something related to the backwards math and a redesign or a revision of design to be more to, to, uh, address pedestrian, what, whatever the language was that you were referring to, ML. Um, uh, uh, and some of the, um, we'd have to figure out exactly, staff would have to figure out exactly how to say it. But there would be a way, I think, to craft a condition that creates the guidance that incorporates what we've been hearing tonight.
And do any of these options, Brad, and, um, include that the project comes back? that the project comes back to us?
Um, boy, there, there's a lot you're asking right now. So let me try to break it apart here. If if you craft a condition that's very discreet, like with the condition that the paths be shortened to the satisfaction of staff, that's actionable. If it's just shortened period, that that doesn't give us any, you know, enough clarity on on how to make that actionable. Um, if it's you know, take into account all the design considerations that have been discussed, that's too broad for us to be able to bring to conclusion.
So it seems like the specifics we've heard, and Lisa, I'm sorry to to jump ahead. We've heard uh, specific requests on the uh, pedestrian paths. We've heard a specific request on the east wall. We've heard a specific request from Mark about protecting or defining uh, the open space and the public nature of the public space and the public nature of the open space. Uh, and we we have some, we have at least, I think, three who are comfortable with using the utilizing the parking reduction issue uh, as an opportunity to reduce the mass and scale of the building. Like, that's what I think I'm hearing from everybody.
We have kept track, we have kept track of those. We we have some rough language for each of those and we could bring them up individually and you can, you can discuss them individually.
All right, um, Lisa, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm at at risk of not taking my own earlier advice, I guess. I'll try to be brief, but I would just reiterate that that to me, there there too many disparate, sprinkled all over the place, conditions to be able to get to a good place on this. And that's why my recommendation would be, one, I I'm not sure if sixty days is enough for the applicant and we might want to hear from the applicant on that if we want to consider kicking it back and then seeing it soon. I I don't know if they'd like more time. Or my bias would be toward denial for them to be able to take all this in and and incorporate it. It it feels like we're conditioning every little thing on this property and and that just doesn't seem good. Um, you know, so to either accept it or to deny it. And then, you know, to address ML's question about, does it come back? Well, if it were to end up that we have the votes to deny, then yes, it would have to come back. We would see it again.
Uh, Mark, you have your hand up.
I just want to point out that um, Lisa talked earlier about efficient meetings and sympathy for the chair running an efficient meeting. One of the things that is incumbent upon upon us all. And I suggested it at the last meeting is come to this meeting with your conditions written and prepared and formalized. This idea of 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 we are, we are, you know, going on three hours, three and a half with, and we have not. People are operating on the fly. I think people have been unprepared. And and that is what is driving the length of this. My suggestion in the email today was to come with your motion and we address conditions and and vote up or down. So this particular methodology has fallen apart. And the straw poll is not working. We operate under a system of motions and votes. And I suggest we get on with motions and votes. And if you have a motion that you want us to vote on, put it down on paper and put it in front of us rather than the circuitous path that we're on.
Mark. Mark. I have tried very hard today to give everyone the opportunity to put their conditions, which people all came to this meeting with. And I am seriously, I do not appreciate your criticism, especially since your own motion was, it could be A or it could be B. The opportunity is for us to talk about the motions. I am happy right now to make the motion that's suggested by staff. And if it gets voted down, it gets voted down. What I've been trying to do is to create the opportunity for us to vote on something that wouldn't vote it down, but would give the applicant the opportunity to revise their proposal so that it better fits our criteria. That's what I've been trying to do. You, you're the fact that you don't want me to, you don't, you don't like my mo- my condition. Okay, that's fine. You don't have to like the condition. But we, our options here are pretty limited. We can either vote on the motion, yay or nay, or we can create a motion that would create a path forward for the applicant. But they would have to revise their proposal. Like, those are the two options. That's what I'm, I think it's pretty straightforward. So if you'd like, we can vote on the suggested motion as is. I don't know whether it'll get approved or not. I, I think it's a three, four vote at this point or a four, three vote. But we can vote on that if you want me to, if you want to. Do you want? Okay, we'll do it.
Refer to the chair.
Who would like to make the motion? Who would like to make the motion to approve the site and use review application L U R two zero two two dash zero zero two one? And the proposed amendment to the B V R C transportation connections plan adopting the staff memorandum of findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria. Would someone like to make that motion?
I will make that motion. I move motion to approve. Sorry, go ahead.
Would someone like to second the motion?
Mark, you're on mute.
Mark is seconding the motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Oh, is there discussion of this motion? Okay, I'm going to read the motion and then we will vote.
I think that there's the opportunity to add amendments if folks want. I think that's part of the process, but thank you, Sarah. Please go ahead.
Uh, we will vote on this motion, yay or nay, and then we can vote on a separate motion. Because that's what we can do here. Is that correct, Laurel?
You don't, you want to add the amendments at this point before you vote on the full motion?
Okay, what amendments would we like to add? I mean, this is, oh, my God.
So it's been moved and seconded. And Sarah, I think you
If I could just clarify, I think Sarah's trying to get a vote on just the motion as it exists. If it gets voted voted down, then people could restate the motion adding amendments.
Yes. So let us, I would like us to vote, please, just on this motion. It's exactly what Mark just asked for. So let's do it. Is there any discussion of this motion? Okay, I'm going to read the motion and then we will vote on it. Motion to approve site and use review application L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two one and proposed amendment to the B V R C transportation connections plan, adopting the staff memorandum of findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria. Laura.
Yay.
Mark.
Yes.
Lisa.
Nay.
George.
No.
Kurt.
Yes.
ML.
No.
Sarah is a no. So the motion is failed. So we now have an opportunity to consider a second motion. Does someone have a second motion?
I would make the same motion, hope for a second, and let people have the opportunity to amend it if people want to add conditions. It would be my strong preference for us to see if we can approve something tonight. If the applicant doesn't like it and doesn't want to implement it, they can always just come back with something else. They're not obligated to implement it. So I would like to see if we can make their plan work for them. So I make the motion. I move to approve site and use review application L U R twenty twenty-two zero 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 two one and the proposed amendment to the B V R C transportation connections plan, adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria.
I second that.
We just voted that down, Laura.
People have the opportunity to add conditions. That's our second option is to approve the motion with conditions. So now this is the normal process. People can suggest amendments to the motion to add your conditions. Is that right, Laurel?
All right. Yes, that's right. Okay. So if somebody wants to make an amendment, they can do that now.
So Sarah, if you would like to add your proposed amendments, or if you'd like to discuss what is the appropriate parking reduction to put into the amendment before you add it, I think now's the time to do it.
Well, okay, uh, so my condition would be that we allow the, we allow the applicant to have the three hundred and forty-eight parking spaces, which is the maximum that they are allowed. That's not, it's not that they're allowed. It's the maximum that they can build. They can have, given the limitations of the parcel. And that they have to work backwards from that number to get to a it could be thirty, it could be thirty-five, it could be forty percent parking reduction. And I'm happy to have that discussion. But it would allow for a rev- a rev- a revision of the design of the building.
Can you state that as a motion, a- a- as a motion to amend? I move.
It's a, it's a, it's a condition. It wouldn't be an amendment. It's
But it's, it still begins, Laurel, correct? I move to condition the motion with this specific set of words. I mean, that, that, that is the process, correct? Yeah, thank you.
Yes. All right. Yeah, it would be, I move to amend.
I move.
We've been using condition language, and I know it sounds kind of funny, but since you're admitting the actual motion to add this condition.
The motion
Great.
to allow the three hundred and forty-eight parking spots, but require the applicant to reduce the mass and scale of the building until those three hundred and forty-eight parking spots are equivalent to fill in the number, I would say thirty or thirty-five percent parking reduction to the number of dwelling units per code regulation.
You could say thirty to thirty-five percent, give a range.
Thirty to thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
ML.
A question, Sarah. The number that you're using, three hundred and thirty-five, is that?
Three forty-eight, thirty-three forty-eight is the maximum number. It's it's the number they're requesting right now, but it is, that's a, that number is a fifty-two point two percent reduction from the number of dwelling units.
So you're saying approve the number that they're asking for? But
which would then trig- trigger their having to revise the math and scale of the building so that that number, the three forty-eight, is equivalent to thirty or between thirty and thirty-five percent of uh, a parking requirement. So it it requires, it forces the building to become smaller.
Right. How many are they proposing right now?
Three hundred and forty-eight.
Oh, that's what they've got now. And that requires a significant
That's a fifty-two point two percent parking reduction.
So so the impact is we get the same amount of parking, but we get less housing.
Correct. I mean, we could reduce the amount of parking. But I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to get us to within spitting distance of code.
I understand.
So that's what I'm trying to get to.
So just as a matter of formality, uh, Chair Silver would need a second, and then you can have a debate about it and then vote on this amendment.
Do we have a second? No second?
I'll second to have the debate. I'll second.
Okay. Okay, discussion?
It's, I think this is an interesting amendment because it's and it's reversed, and I can understand how it can be polarizing to some people. So I I it may fail. Um, and we may need to relook at how to maybe restate it in a different way. Because I I I I see Mark's point of view relative to this is positioning of uh, par- parking over housing, right? And and Laura and 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 I don't think that's how it is intended. But I see how people could polarize that conversation around it. Um, so I I'll put it out there that I'm supportive of the concept of what it's trying to achieve. Um, but I also think I I don't know another mechanism that we can get there, but I think what you're trying to do is address the mass and scaling of the building, not the parking, but you're using the parking to do that. Uh, so I'm supportive of the amendment, um, but I'm also supportive of someone coming up with a different amendment if this fails to address the same thing in a different mechanism, if we can think of one. Thank you.
All right, Lisa, then ML, and then Mark.
Very similar to George, you still try to be brief. Um, I appreciate the creativity of this and the thought and effort that went in. Like, you obviously thought about it beforehand and came up with a way to to try to condition it to get to address at least your concerns, which may be shared by other board members. This may just be a personal preference, but like I even though I know this is how code works and how law often works. My knee jerk responses that I don't love condition, tr- trying to get to an end by conditioning a different thing and it kind of being this roundabout thing. I'm not saying I have a better solution. I don't, like, that's why I keep talking about, like, let's just deny it, which may or may not be supported. Um, you know, but but I I appreciate where you got there. I'm I'm not sure I'm a yes vote on it because I I think it's I think it's creative, which I love, and I love that you brought an actual condition to try to move it forward. But ultimately, I have concerns that it's kind of trying to get somewhere in a complex way that I'm not sure will get us to the actual outcome we want. And I'd sort of like to see this come back to planning board, honestly, because it's just not there yet. And I do trust staff, but I wouldn't mind seeing this project again.
ML.
Um, so Sarah, I'm, I'm kind of where uh, Lisa is and I guess George, um, it I'm not, I, is there a way, and I know this isn't speaking to your, to your um, amendment, but and this might be a question for Laurel. Is there a way that we can propose the height variance for a percentage of the project? So that the entire site isn't given the height?
Like you do with the, like a permit says, like moving, having it sent back like that? Is that what you mean?
No, what I'm saying is that can, um, you know, sixty percent of the buildings be at that height and the rest have to comply with with the existing code. I mean, that will specifically start to break down the massing. That will cause a redesign of the severity of the long corridors, the unbroken buildings, you know, these kinds of it's not very livable for for pedestrians. It might house a lot of students. Um, but it's not creating a an environment that is uh, livable. And I mean, imagine you're on the third story and you're one of those interior courtyards and you're looking across twenty-five feet at another person's window. It's there's a lot of pieces that um, aren't speaking to the values that are embedded in our in some of the code things that I pointed out. And I'm wondering can we do that? And if so?
This isn't about this particular um, amendment to the motion, but you could do it. It would have to go, you'd probably, I'd recommend sending it back to DAB to review, um, because it sounds like there would be some uh, design changes based on what you're talking about.
Well, a percent. Um, it is just like qualifying the height. We accept the height variance for you know, sixty percent of the buildings. Period. That would start to relieve some of the some of the issues with the context, the buildings to the north and the buildings to the west are what nineteen to twenty-three feet tall? And that's the buildings that are closest to it. So it's not about a view or not. It's just about scale. What's happening in those interstitial spaces? Right? This is gonna be, this is gonna be big. Um, so that's, that's my, that's my concern, Sarah, and that's why I'm hesitating to, um, to believe that the parking the strategy that you're proposing is since it's not going to come back to us, we're not gonna, we don't know what will happen. We don't know how this is going to play out. But imposing a percent reduction, we know what's going to happen. It's going to be shorter. And we don't know exactly where or how, but it will be shorter. And hopefully they will speak to some of the issues, but that's why I'm hesitating about the park.
That's fine. May I suggest that you consider that as a separate condition and then we can vote on this one uh, and and then move forward?
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm prepared to go to a vote on this because I I see I don't have the vote. So unless Mark and Laura have something additional they want to add.
I I just want to say that if this amendment fails, I think that there could be an amendment that is something along the lines of having varied form and height along certain facades to break up the massing. Uh, I think we Uh, I think we could craft an amendment like that that would probably succeed. So, um, I, I just wanted to put in a, a vote for that, but I think we can maybe get to the same place. Sarah, you had said maybe if someone has a different amendment that could help achieve the same result. Um, so I wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will vote on the condish- I guess we don't even need to vote on the condition because we know we don't have, we don't have the, I don't have the votes.
Since you had a motion and a second, you'll have to vote on this one.
Okay, so the condition, so we have to vote on the entire motion with the condition?
Just the condition.
Just the amendment, yeah, just this condition, yeah.
So my, the language again is, um, amendment to condition, right?
It's motion to, motion to amend is what the language was.
With a condition that would allow the three hundred and forty-eight parking spots, but would require the applicant to reduce the mass and scale of the building until those three hundred and forty-eight parking spots are equivalent to a thirty or between a thirty and thirty-five percent parking reduction relative to the number of dwelling units per code regulations. All right, uh, do I need to repeat that, or does that count as the repeat?
It comes as a repeat, and then you need a vote on it.
Laura?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Mark?
No.
ML?
No.
George? George, you're, you're muted.
Yes.
Uh, Kurt?
No.
And Sarah is a yes, so it fails, uh, five to two. Okay. Next, uh, ML, did you want to, do you want to try to, do you want to try to craft something, or do you, or do you want us, should we just move to continue and have, have staff explain why, why we're denying, why we're denying this proposal?
I, I think we have a motion on the floor that we would have to vote down before we could move on.
Uh, we've already voted down the motion.
Just the amendment. We just voted down the amendment, yeah, so you'd have to vote on the actual motion that Laura.
Okay, well, Laura, what is your motion, what is your amendment?
Well, I think that if people want to offer another amendment, a different amendment, like if George wanted to offer his amendment about breaking up the mass, like, this is where we can add all the conditions that we want to add, and then see if the package is something that people can vote for. So George had a condition about like adding a pedestrian through fair on Twenty-Eighth Street, I think. Or if you wanted to add something about varied roofline on Twenty-Eighth on that facade to break down the massing, or I would leave it up to George to, to craft what you think would work for you, and the group might be able to agree to.
I, I think I got to a point where, um, I, I kind of feel like what Lisa was saying, which was we've gotten to a point of too many things, and I, I think that, um, I, I'm not prepared to move that forward.
So there's a motion on the floor. Does anyone have an amendment?
ML.
Um, and I probably need some, I, I asked the question to Laurel already, uh, considering an amendment that would reduce the height modification to only a percentage rather than a hundred percent of the project.
ML, at some point, you need to make them up, you need to move to amend, followed by words that we can, that we can debate and vote on, and so.
I understand, Mark, I understand, I understand.
So I'm.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to get there.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out how to get there, because there's, um, I understand from Laurel that we can do that. And what I'm trying to get a sense of is, um, are there any, I guess, precedence or limiting factors that would suggest a percentage, or? Is that?
Uh, yeah, you, you can do that. I think, um, one of the other options you could do is wait on this motion and continue, and then have language drafted for the next continuance, but we could work on language together too, if you would like to do that instead. Um, it kind of depends on what the board would like to do, if they want to continue this hearing to have those findings drafted, or, or if we want to try and do it.
I see.
Now, can I just call on, let me call on Lisa and see if she has a thought.
Yeah, I, I don't have an amendment now, and, and I'm, I'm so sorry, I sound like a, a broker in market here, but once again, we're pushing up against ten o'clock. Um, so I, I would suggest that one way or another, again, it might be appropriate to continue it, and I, again, I think the fact that we get so caught up in this i- i- is indicative of where the project's at. Um, but I, I, I would be happy to support probably either of those, depending on exactly the language, but either, um, you know, doing a full formal denial, or just saying like, hey, we're gonna try to keep amending this. And as much as we all, I assume, as much as me kind of hate that we might be coming back and looking at this again, um, you know, that, that we're gonna try to do something, because I do think that your idea, ML, is a, is a creative one, and it was interesting to me when we were staring at the kind of the overhead aspect that, um, Laura, you, I think intelligently asked them to put up there, that what I was seeing was just, yeah, ju- just the massing and how it doesn't step down toward the creek, and it doesn't step down toward anywhere else, and it's these weird narrow channels
Mm-hmm.
of rooms looking at each other, and whi- which is the same feedback we gave last time. Um, you know, uh, i- i- yeah, and, and so I, I, I'm just, again, I, I think we're kind of at the time of night where I, I personally don't trust my decision-making. I don't want to say I don't trust anyone else's, um, and I think it'd be appropriate to either continue and try to do amendments, and I, I believe Laurel, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can individually, like, not, not two or more planning board members talking to staff, but we can individually talk to staff and request support on crafting um, amendments or motion language, right? We, we can, I mean, it, it takes up your time, obviously, but I think we are allowed to do that.
Yeah, you're allowed to do that, and we could also do it, you know, if you want to do it right now, if you give me a few minutes, I can work with staff to create something, but that's just a thought. Um, but you can work with me individually, but I think Brad has his hand up, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Chair, if it's okay, Brad?
Yeah, I'm a little worried we're conflating things. One is if the original motion, which is the same motion that was on, gets voted without amendments, then, um, that represented is nile, and we would just ask that you, you know, give, uh, instruct staff to come back with findings. I think we're conflating that option with the option of, uh, ML making an amendment, but then putting in language that, um, that has, uh, an amendment to, to do something, so I think that's the request on the table for that, that option of the two. And I just want to make sure we're not conflating things here.
Can I ask a process question?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Sarah. So I think that Laurel mentioned one other option, and I would be interested in getting data on this, which is we could move to continue for sixty days and let the applicant come back with a new proposal based on what they've heard. And she said we'd want to check with the applicant on whether that's even something that they're interested in. I would be interested to know if the applicant thinks that they can come back in sixty days with something that we might be able to approve. It's, can we ask the applicant that? What do you think, Chair?
Say the applicant is prepared to answer that question. If you did that, you know, if, if they weren't, yeah, so they are prepared to answer that question if it's posed to them.
Okay, applicant, where are you?
I'm here. I just don't, I can't turn my video on, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, um, uh, wait a minute, Devin, will you turn her video back on? Please. There you are.
Hi, thank you so much for your deliberation. I, I think our preference would be to get a decision tonight and be able to move forward, um, versus a continuance. I think you're getting close, and we would like to, um, if you're interested, we could propose some options for redesigning the east facade and pulling back some of the building. And, you know, that seems to be where the concentration of focus is on the architecture, and we would be willing to work with DAB and staff to achieve that. Um, but I think a continuance at this point would probably not be in the best of all of our interests, and so we'd love to get to a decision. Be happy to talk to you about that.
Okay, so, um, I'm inclined, if it works for folks, to offer a proposed amendment in line with what Danica just described, and see if that works for the board, that we could approve this tonight with a condition. Um, something along the lines of that along the east facade along Twenty-Eighth Street, the building height would step down. Um, and the massing would be broken up with a pedestrian corridor or something like that. And if, if the east facade is not enough, we could talk about other places where the massing needs to step down, but let's, let's think about whether we can approve something tonight. Um, I'm not sure that we're gonna, I mean, maybe people are too brain-dead and they just want to continue it. That's fine, too. I, I would defer to what people want, but I would like to try to see if we can approve something tonight. It's my preference, but I defer to the chair.
Lisa.
Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out if I should even be talking, um. I, I, I think my concern is that at this time of night, and I don't mean this, I think I would have phrased it very similarly to how you did, Laura, that I feel like, well, we could do like something like this or something like that, or maybe if we did this, this would sort of start to fix it, and I just, I don't, I don't think that's what we should be doing on this plan, and I don't think it's what you should be doing at this time of night, I, you know, I, so I, I would be more supportive of either a continuance to keep talking about this, I'm just concerned that we're gonna get caught up in exactly the same conversation we're having right now. Um, or applicants heard a lot, they have a strong sense of what we want, staffs hear a lot. One or another, I'd love to see this come back, and I totally appreciate that sixty days isn't what they want, that's fine, um, but I, I just, I, I don't know, I've never, I haven't known from the beginning how to condition this in a way that fixes all of the things. And I, I still don't know now at ten o'clock at night.
So, uh, Lisa, what is your, what is your proposed action?
Hmm, sorry, Danica, um, I, I would like to vote on the condition, again, on it as proposed without an amendment. Or if we don't vote for that, I'd like to continue.
Okay.
I believe the motion is still on the floor without an amendment currently, so we need to vote again.
Okay, so unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to, uh, reread this suggested motion, and we will vote on it again, as it, without any conditions. Motion to approve site and use review application L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two one, and proposed amendments to the B V R C transportation connection plan adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria. Laura?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Uh, ML?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
George?
No.
And Sarah's a no, so it fails four to three.
Sarah, do we now need to ask staff to crap, like what Laurel was saying about making sure that we do this in a legally defensible way? Um, do we now need to direct staff to provide that back to us, or what, what is the right step? And maybe that's a question for Laurel or Brad.
But then the next step, I think, is, um, right, so you just turn down the motion to accept. So now you need either a motion or a continuance, either way, um, a motion to deny. If that's the route you guys want to go, and I can give you like some language, I can reply some language, um, to deny, and then direct us to fi- do findings, or do a continuance, or if there's another option too.
Okay, so.
Uh, and Brad, I saw it, yeah, apologies.
Let me just put this out there, Brad, you can respond to it. My suggestion would be that we vote on a motion to continue, and if it passes, it passes, and if it fails, it fails, and then we know we have to vote on a motion to deny. What do you think, Brad?
Uh, that certainly is the board's prerogative. I think we've heard the applicant say that they're not particularly interested in continuance, and I, uh, think that means under really any circumstances. Um, to clarify and build on what Laurel said, uh, if there's a motion to deny, I would recommend folks give just a very, you don't have to be lawyers, just give a brief statement of what, uh, why you are denying it. Um, and then as part of the motion, direct staff to, um, capture that in, uh, a motion for, in a memo for future. Uh, appro-
Yeah, so it could look something like, is, if it's okay, Brad, if I just jump in and say, I move to deny this application and direct the city attorney and planning director to draft findings that are consistent with this discussion, and bring it back to the board's consideration at X meeting, something like that.
Okay, um, so, that sounds, um, good, um, um, can we just ask Devin to kind of type that up while George gives his comments?
Yeah, Brad, uh, sorry, I just wanted a clarification on what you just said. So you, you're suggesting that we don't vote on a continuance? I, I'm just saying the applicant has really asked to not do that, but it's completely. Well, the, the, in the, in the, the purpose of the, just to clarify, with the purpose of the continuance, basically to continue this conversation and potentially come up with some all, um, some, some things that, some conditions that would allow it to move forward, is that right? Absolutely, you're prerogative to do that. Um, I think the applicant is, uh, reflecting, and I, I don't want to speak for her, if you want to have them speak again, but uh, my understanding is he was agreeing that there seems to be, uh, a split of opinions and many conditions that may not be reconcilable at the end of the day. Yeah, I, I, I at least, uh, I, I mean, I'll speak myself for, as a board member. I, I don't think I'm in a, I, I don't think I'm in a place necessarily where I'm suggesting full denial. And to, to the extent that what Laura was talking about, for instance, at East Facade, that, that was a specific condition that I had brought up. I, I just think that was one specific condition of a, several. And to what Lisa's saying is now this meeting has gone on for four hours. I, I'm not opposed to trying to bring this to conclusion in a continuance, because I do think that there's a possibility that we could move something forward with the right amount of conditions, but I don't know that at least a number of us are in a frame of mind that we can get there right now. It's not my preference to continue, but I don't have another solution beyond denial, and I, I don't know if that's the right thing uh, for the project either, because I liked where ML was going with a number of things, and I think we could get to greater specificity and come to probably agreement, uh, where we could get, you know, five or six votes, uh, to, to move it forward, and then, um, be in a comfortable place, at least that's my, my, my opinion.
ML, and then Lea, and then Laura.
I think Laura had her hand up first, Sarah.
Oh, sorry, Laura, I'm sorry, I'm just going by who's in line on.
That, that's okay. I, I think that, um, I would not want to move to a denial on the assumption that that's what the applicant prefers without checking with them, because I think what I heard Danica say was that she thought we could get there. And so that sounds to me like if we can't get there tonight, and I agree, it sounds like people are not able to do, to stay the amount of time that would absolutely take for us to get there tonight, so I'm in favor of a continuance if folks think we can get there, um, at our next, next time we pick this back up. And I think that is what Danica expressed she would like to, but if we're gonna do a denial thinking that that's what the applicant wants, I think we should check first.
Thank, thank you for asking, Laura. I think our, we've worked really hard on this for three years. I think it's a very large project, it's complex. We have listened to your feedback and all of the boards and staff. I think continuing it without, you know, just continuing this discussion was, I'm not sure that we're gonna get there. I, we, we have heard feedback around certain elements of the project. That's why I offered the east facade that keeps coming up, it's the gateway into Boulder, it's the most visible part of the site. And so we were, you know, if there was a condition that could be crafted to look at how to make that more interesting, more dynamic, you know, if, if we could create a beacon on the, on the north side of the project, or you know, break up the facade on the east, change up the materials, you know, I think those types of direction would be very helpful to us. Um, at this point, we're, I think we don't know if we can get, we can go away by ourselves for sixty days and come back with something that meets your expectations. So we would like to get direction to move forward with conditions. Um, but a continuance at this point without clear direction is difficult. We have been working on this, we have a huge team, we have great architects. We're willing to take that direction, we just, we do need it at this point, and so a continuation to ha- to have this discussion without clear direction is, um, challenging for us.
I'm sorry, but if I could ask, Danica, I think your choices are between we continue this discussion or we deny tonight. Which would you prefer? Because I don't think that people are prepared to give you that direction tonight.
Um, I, I guess I, I would call on, I am not the developer, so I would ask my client, Andrew or Rob, to join in and make that final decision. Because if we're continuing it to craft conditions, I think that's one thing, if we're continuing it and you, you want us to come back with something different, I don't know if we can do that without clear direction, so.
Oh, I, I think it's the first, I think it's we would be continuing it so that the board can craft conditions. Is that right, Sarah?
Uh, we've been trying to craft conditions for a, a total of, um, eight hours, and we have not been able to do it. So, um, I don't know that we, uh, I'm not sure we'll be able to find conditions. If you all think that having this conversation a third time will get us to conditions, I'm happy to have a vote of motion on that, but it's, uh, we haven't been able to do it yet, so. I'm happy to have a vote of motion on that, but it's, uh, we haven't been able to do it yet, so.
Um, Andrew, could I ask you to join it with Landmark to make this decision? It, I, I feel like it shouldn't be up to me.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I don't think I can start my video.
Uh, uh, Devin, can you turn on Andrew's video, please?
Is it working?
Yep, we can see you.
Um, so, I, you know, I agree with Danica, um, it's, I guess, a little bit unclear to me what the, um, what we would be doing in the, in a sixty day period, uh, if it's potentially something that we could do, or maybe a shorter continuance to come back. I, I, I think the, um, from what I've heard, uh, there are many things that the board likes about our project, um, but there are some things that you would like to adjust through conditions. It seems like we've, you know, we've had a very long discussion tonight, and I think to some extent run out of steam in coming up with the condition that, that works for the board, um, which, y- you know, seems like a, a real loss for the project, um, to end up in denial because of that. Um, and so, uh, you know, our, our strong preference is to not wait sixty days um, to come back and, and have this conversation, but instead give the board, you know, potentially a chance to, to come back with conditions that we can reach an approval under, you know, but with the benefit of a clear mind and, and some more time to think through the conditions.
Um, I'm, ML, I'm going to go to Brad first, since he has Canada.
Just want to share that, uh, if the board is interested in a continuance, that would be sooner, uh, we would be able to do in the August eighth, uh, special meeting as one option.
Okay, uh, ML, you have your hand up. Wait, you're still, you're still muted.
Can't find my unmute button. Um, I think that what we're getting at is, so Brad, you're suggesting August eighth, so we don't have a meeting scheduled for August eighth, you're suggesting we create one rather than put it on the fifteenth? Our schedule is full on the fifteenth?
Yeah, we're actually full until September.
Got it. Um, I think that the idea of a continuance to be able to craft um, a motion, or to, uh, to craft, craft amendments that would get this motion approved um, would be something that I'd be interested in. I don't, there's, there's a lot about this project that is good and that I'm supporting. I am not, I think that there is some lethal bits to the massing and the pedestrian experience um, with these long buildings, and I don't know how to craft that amendment um, on the fly tonight.
Well, I would say, ML, that I don't think tonight's going to be a night where we craft any amendments at this point. Yeah, so, um, what I'm hearing is, uh, some coalescing around willingness to continue the hearing, in- in- including from the applicant. He would prefer for it not to be sixty days, but the truth is, our schedule is very packed. We have board meetings every Tuesday, apparently, except for Tuesday, the eighth of, uh, of, uh, August, and it sounds like we may now have one on Tuesday, the eighth of August. Um, so, uh, if, can I just get a thumbs up if people, which, which staff are in, not staff, I'm so sorry, which board members are open to a continuance? Thumbs up, one, two, three, four, and five. Okay, so we're at a max, we have, we have a majority. So I'm sorry, Devin, we're going to need you to redraft that motion that you just drafted about denial and redraft it as a continuance. And, uh, and then we'll have to figure out with direction from staff how we go about breaking the logjam, because we have a logjam. And, uh, I'm not sure it's as simple as just the east facade. I think there, I think it's more complicated than that. Um, uh, to Lisa's point that there are, um, multiple, we, each of us has our own little thing we're trying to widget with, and, um, uh, I'm a little concerned that when we have our continuance hearing, we're going to end up in this exact same place. And, uh, but we have a majority of people who want a continuance, so we will do that, and, uh, or we'll make a motion and we'll vote on it, and I'm sure it'll pass, and then we will have a continuance, but I think we need help from staff to get past our logjam. And, uh, we're not going to do it tonight, but, uh, maybe we can talk about it in matters at our maybe our next meeting, or we'll find a time to collectively discuss. Uh, um, Laurel, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say before we move to continue, um, I was incorrect about being able to help you draft your, um, your amendments, uh, since it is quasi judicial hearing, since we are continuing it, it is a matter for the board. Um, so I would recommend trying to draft something, and then I can help or, and the staff can help create these actual, yeah, drafting, so apologies for that, that was my, my fault.
I'm just concerned we're going to just end up right back in the same washing machine. Okay, a Mark and a Laura.
So, I, I, I actually want to have Laurel repeat that. This, the, the time between our, uh, the last meeting where we reviewed this and this meeting, um, I had asked, uh, you and, um, Hella about uh, contact with other board members about staff, and so it's quasi judicial, and my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we cannot, I can't call up Kurt and say, hey, what do you think about this condition? And I can't call up Ed Stafford and say, hey, Ed, what, what about we move that, uh, curb cut on Twenty-Eighth Street? So, it's, it is, my understanding is that it is incumbent upon us to draft conditions essentially on our own, and that at the meeting, then, anyone can comment, argue for or against, supplement, but until then, we are on our own.
So, and I, I see Brad jump on, so I'm just going to jump in and, and say this, and then Brad, feel free to, to add whatever you'd like. So you can contact staff, can't contact each other because it's quasi judicial, it's supposed to be in front of the, in front of the public. Um, you can't contact each other, or you can contact us, it's subject to disclosure. Um, we just can't draft the, like, amendment language for you, um, because it is, um, an, an amendment of the board. Does that make sense? But you can call us with questions, or anything like that, and Brad, feel free to jump in if you have any thoughts about that, but that's my understanding.
I was gonna, uh, just, uh, say that, uh, yeah, there's a distinction. You, you can definitely contact staff to get clarifications on the case. Hey, Edward, uh, I'm thinking about crafting a condition that does this twenty eighth, what, what would be the effect of that? You know, that's, that's information gathering, you can get that from us, uh, through the process.
Okay. Look, Laura?
All right.
I just want to commend the board members and staff and the applicant for, we, we're working hard on this, we're trying to make something work, and I appreciate everybody's goodwill and patience with each other as we are moving through this. Uh, I will offer, I will volunteer to go back to the video and look at what everybody has said about conditions and try to craft some language. Obviously, I have my own opinions about this, and I would have been happy to approve this project as is, but I do think it's important that we, as a board, i- in, in deference to the great amount of effort that the applicant team has put forward to try to get this to work, to try to offer something that would work for us. So I'm going to put my own feelings aside and try to draft something that I think perhaps the board can take up next time, subject to the board tinkering with and all of our normal process, but I will at least try to break the logjam, as you said, Sarah. So, um, if that is okay with folks, or even if it's not, I'm going to give it a shot. So you'll see what I produce and see if you like it or not.
All right, well, thank you, Laura, for taking that on. Um, okay, uh, Devin, do you by chance have a motion for us? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. Uh, do I need to, um, I must need to list the site review number, so, um, I move to continue this, the site review for L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two one for the board's consideration at the August eighth uh, special planning board meeting.
A second.
Okay, any discussion, any conditions, any amendments? Okay, I'm going to re, I'm going to reread the motion. I move to continue the site review for L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two one for the board's consideration at its August eighth special planning board meeting. Okay, Laura?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Sarah is a yes, okay. Seven zero, we'll be back right here on the eighth of August. Okay, um, uh, Brad, you have your hand up.
Yes, I didn't want to interrupt the flow, and it's not subsequently a problem, but, uh, we do need a motion to hold a special meeting on August eighth and second in approval.
Okay, uh, do I just say a motion?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we have, make a motion to approve a special planning board meeting for August eighth, twenty twenty-three to review L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 two one.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, it was seconded by Laura. Um, all right, uh, do I need to reread it, Brad? No, okay, Laura?
Yes.
Lisa?
Hi.
Marx?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
And Sarah is a yes, okay. Brad, and then Laurel, and then hopefully we can wrap this one up. Brad, go ahead.
Uh, I, I have no comments at this point.
Okay, you're, just be, you have your hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Residual hand. Um, I just wanted to remind the board, um, just really quickly, since this is a continuation of a quasi judicial hearing, be careful of experte contacts. If there's any outside information that should be that you get, please make sure to share it with the secretary of the board, with Devin, so that you can share it with everybody. Just as a reminder, since it's a continued quasi judicial hearing.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura.
Just a real quick, um, uh, announcement again about the airport open house. This is an opportunity to see the four scenarios and register your opinion. July eighteenth, four to six P M, it's before our planning board meeting. It's on a drop-in basis, there will be a staff presentation um, at four thirty P M, and again at five twenty, if you want to see the staff presentation. And there will also be, uh, another beheard Boulder survey, and it'll be open from July twelfth to July thirty-first. I will send you all of this in writing. But I just want to remind people, this is going on, and your input is very welcome as individuals, not speaking for the board, but just as individual residents of Boulder.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, I am adjourning this meeting. Everyone, go home and go to sleep. Good night.
Thank you.